Good evening. Welcome to the full city council for December 19th, 2023. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Maldonado Velez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Puelo?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Aki.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Amen. All right, so this is the last meeting of the three musketeers, so let's get this going. For housekeeping, Councilor Maldonado Velez is online, so is Councilor Jenny Rivera. Therefore, motions to take roll call votes for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable for all motions received, referred items that can be removed, items from committee table them, place them on the table, pack them together, suspend the rules unless there is an objection. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, that is out of the way.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to suspend the rules to take up public comment out of order.
A what?
Public comment out of order.
Public comment out of order. So before we get started, one, we did choose the name, and you did it, Councilor Anderson Burgos. For voting purposes, it's once again Councilor Bacon. Not really, once again, it was a three in a row, then a break, and but you're back.
Yeah.
Before we go out of order for that, I would like to invite special guests into the chamber. If they could please come in.
I didn't hear a second to this motion.
It really wasn't an emotion.
Second.
Really wasn't an emotion.
Second, third, fourth.
Also, if I could have Councilor McGivern to come up and take over as president. You do it on Thursdays when I'm doing my taxi duty. So I'm gonna step down from here and turn it over to Councilor McGivern.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly McGivern. I am Joe McGivern's youngest daughter, alongside my sister Brenda, our mother Jenny, and our other sister Pauline, who is on Zoom, and the whole McGivern clan behind or in front of us, and the those that can't be here tonight. We want to thank you for allowing us to interrupt your meeting for a quick moment. Don't bang that to stop me from talking. Tonight is a special night for our family, as it marks the end of an era. For the past 44 years, our father, Joe, has been a trusted voice and a guiding light for the city of Hoyoke. The McGivern for Hoyoke era will come to an end in the near future, but that also means the start of a new one. We also want to take a minute to thank Todd McGee, Peter Tomlin, and Jose Luis Valdinez for their years of service and dedication to the city as well. Being 37 and 39, we don't know a life without our father as a city councillor. We grew up watching him on TV, spending time in these chambers, practicing banging the gavel, reenacting meetings with our good friend Kristen Welch, the late David Welch's daughter, attending yearly swearing-in ceremonies, marching with him in the parade, giving speeches like this one that are short, concise, and memorable. However, Brenda wrote this, otherwise it wouldn't be. Fighting over who made a better campaign manager, and most importantly, being a part of the McGivern heritage. While our father did the hard part for the past 44 years, this experience will also be a part of who we are for the rest of our lives.
So tonight marks a historic moment in the city's history and the end of an amazing era of our father's longtime commitment to residents of Hoyoke. For the past 44 years, they have trusted and chosen him to guide the city using his experience, reason, and judgment. They trusted him to be their voice in good times and challenging times, and not many people can say that for 44 years, they were chosen by their neighbors and fellow residents to do this job. But this is an accomplishment you achieved. During this time, you never took your tenure for granted, and you grew and expanded your knowledge to make decisions and choices that would prepare the city for the future. So tonight, we want to thank our father, Joseph McGivern, for his dedication to this city, and more importantly, for always being there for us while managing all that he did. Baxter and Griffin are really looking forward to Grandpa Doggy and Cat daycare that's opening soon, and congratulations, Dad, on entering your retirement era.
It's been a while since I've been up here. That's not true. I had a bing of gavel for Todd about, a little bit loud the other day. Thank you. First and foremost, I've often said Springfield tries to tell us that they're the family of homes, the family of houses, as they call theirselves. If that be the case, Hoyoke is the city of family. And I think everybody in this room, as an elected official, understands that in their heart and understands why we do this. God knows it's not because, I know cocaine lights stay until midnight, you know, for meetings, and I certainly understand the importance of everybody having a chance to talk, but the hours are sometimes long. But the issues are what's important. It's what's important for all of us together. Government is not about elected officials only. Government is about department heads, about city. After, you know, we have a mayor, we have a treasurer in Hoyoke, we have a great city council, our school committee, wonderful city clerk, and so many individuals have filled those roles over the years. But the nuts and bolts are the people. Our chief of police who is here tonight, our chief of the fire department who's here tonight, superintendent of the DPW, our now-not-acting treasurer Rory Casey out there, you know, all understand, because it's the people who work in the trenches that make government work itself. We do it, and we try to make better for them, try to make it better for everybody, because it's about the people who live in this city. It's the greatest city in the world to live in, it's the greatest city in the world to work in, which I do both, but it's the most wonderful city in the world to raise a family. Jenny and I can't be more proud than our daughters, not just their words here this evening, but their actions. Brenda is a chairperson of the Providence Ministries, Kelly sits on the Boys and Girls Club in the prey committee. Brenda's just about operating the merry-go-round these days. They know what it means to give back despite having two very high-power jobs that take up a lot of their time. Jenny is a retired educator. Jenny speaks three languages. Have you ever told this story before? I speak one. There's a lot of thank yous, not gonna be happening this evening, but there's a lot of thank yous I want to give personally, because that's what retirement is about, is to recognize the people you served with, now, before, then, and afterwards. But I wish everybody who's going forward nothing but the best. The city is in good hands, and let's get this meeting over with, because I think there's a pint to Guinness back there waiting for me and Todd.
Before we finish up, I'd like to go out of order. I'd like to go out of order to a late file from Councilor Jordan and I, and take up final action tonight, so suspended rules take up final action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Councilor Jordan and Todd McGee, order that the section of Appleton in front of the YMCA be named Joe McGivern Way.
Motion to adopt, no discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I have to abstain for the first time in my life. I don't think I've ever abstained.
I thought there was no abstaining.
It passed, it was close, it was very close. So now, Councilor Anderson Burgos, you had a motion to go out of order to public comment?
Correct.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First up is Council, let's see here, Ann Tallheimer's first, sorry.
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, just underneath.
How about now?
There you go.
Ann Tallheimer, 97 Brown Avenue, apartment 2L. So usually I come in here when I'm complaining about something, and don't think I don't have things to complain about, some of you have behaved very badly in public forums recently. But I wanted to take this specific opportunity, not only to thank Charter and Rules for your new short-meeting rules, what took you so long, but also to support Councilor Maldonado Velez's items later in the agenda, and to carve out some time specifically to thank him for his work. As someone who is an engaged voter in this city, he has been an inspiration, and I know he's on Zoom and not in the chamber, but I wanted to carve out some time to recognize his work, a lot of the things that he's done to revise process, to make this government more equitable, and to really bring a human compassionate face to the work. I personally appreciate that. I'm sure I speak for many other folks who are not here in this chamber, and I wanted to have some time to recognize that. I'm bummed that he's not gonna be with us in this body, but I'm excited to get to work with him on other initiatives in the city, and I'm certain this is not the last that we've seen of his good work, and particularly those items that he filed today that you're gonna need to address with the new council coming up. So I wanted to make sure that we carved out a little time to thank him for his work and to recognize all that he's done for the city, his compassionate approach, and the way that he carefully considered things, whether he agreed with them initially or not, whether you agreed with him or not, he gave it all careful, considerate thought, and I think that's a model everybody in this room should follow for the council going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ryan Allen.
Ryan Allen, 84 Meadowbrook Road. Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to be here at this final meeting of the 2022-2023 council to thank all the various members of this body for your service to the city of Hoyoke. The work here done in this room is important, and as a former council appointee, I know firsthand how difficult and taxing that work can be and the toll it can sometimes take. I do, however, want to give a special thank you to the three long-serving and outgoing members of the Hoyoke City Council. I had the honor and the privilege to work with Councilor Peter Tomlin, current council president Todd McGee, and former council president Joe McGivern, and I want to assure each of you that this city is deeply appreciative of each of your respective terms of service. I feel the city of Hoyoke is very fortunate to have had such dedicated public servants. Each of your respective tenures is distinguished, not just by the longevity of your elected terms, which is impressive in and of its own right, but the degree to which you've served with humility, compassion, empathy, and respect. Each of you should feel proud of how you have represented your families in the city of Hoyoke. You have had such deep and positive impact on the city of Hoyoke in immeasurable ways, and I want to take this time to thank you. And I also just wanted to say that I'd like to lend my services again, though Todd McGee tells me this has already been done, the disaster cleanup effort that would have been Joe McGivern's locker. I figured me and Jeff could probably throw on a hazmat suit and some gloves. Joking aside, though, thank you to every councillor, I wish all the best to the council in the new year, and Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, I said I got you Guinness, so I mean, it goes back. Nathan Chung.
Hi, thank you. Nathan Chung, 90th Avenue, apartment 4A, Hoyoke. I want to thank the three councillors retiring, and also Councilor Jose, who's not in person. He just brought a really civil behavior and also a different perspective as a minority/majority person in Hoyoke with darker skin, a little bit darker than mine even. Sorry, maybe that's not PC. You know, frankly, attending, looking at the city council meeting, sometimes being in public forums as a participating member or as a public attendee, it sometimes doesn't feel safe from the different, sometimes over-the-line criticism of other people, or it's just emotional outbursts. And I think if you want people to feel hopeful about Hoyoke, and we want more residents, more investors, more potential government employees to come into Hoyoke, I think that culture really needs to change. And I know everybody has their burdens, their personalities, and their internal struggles that sort of affect how we act in the public forum, and I think if civil behavior is very difficult to achieve because of something inside of us, that's a real deep self-reflection question that we need to all delve into. I hope next year gets a little better, it's just a couple of weeks away, I guess, and I think a lot of changes are proposed to make the hearing a little bit more equitable for people, making sure the hearings occur earlier and also making sure the meetings don't go too long. I know you want a lot of debate and discussion, but the other hand, the other side of that is...
We're here in a minute.
Yeah. If we don't allow, if we want the city council to be inclusive, as many people to run for candidacy, and as many people with different resources and abilities to participate, we have to make sure the burdens are not too high, especially considering that it's supposed to be a part-time job with a $10,000 a year salary. And the way it's structured, it tends to favor people who have a lot of time, people have a lot of wealth, or, you know, just comfortable and retired, people of certain persuasion, and that, I think, needs to change if we want this to be a really reflective and equitable council. So thank you, and Happy New Year to everybody. Merry Christmas. And Happy Hanukkah.
Good evening, everyone. Lynda Pratt, 39 St. Colby Drive, apartment C. I would like to join the others in thanking our long-serving councillors who will be leaving us. Tonight, I am really here to thank additionally, Councilor Jose Maldonado Velez. Jose, I can't see you, so I'll just look at a screen, but I really want to thank you for your courage in talking openly about your own experiences growing up in Hoyoke. I'd like to thank you for your honesty, and I would like to thank you for your hard work these last two years on city council. I'd also like to thank you for the decorum and the respect that you have shown others in these chambers, and I think some of our longtime councillors could definitely take a lesson from you on that. Thank you.
Last is Patty Devine.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like this not to go against my time, because I would like to thank people that I've served with before, before I get into what I was originally gonna say. First of all, I'd like to thank Jose Maldonado Velez for his service, although we didn't get to serve together, I know how hard he worked, and I think he did a tremendous job, so I just want to thank him. And then I'd like to thank Joe McGivern, Peter Tomlin, and Todd McGee. Joe McGivern and I began, he was much more before me, but 1990 was when I first started serving, and I was on the board of aldermen at the time. Peter Tomlin, a few years after that, was also on the board of aldermen at the time, and we were the ones, some of the ones, that changed the name to city councillors. And Todd McGee, I'd like to thank you for your friendship and your service to the city and the president of the city council. So now, if I could get into mine. As I stand before you, looking forward to serving the city of Hoyoke again, I can only look up, as I have done many times in the past, at the words "makers of law, makers of history." Where did those words go? Why aren't they no longer important to some here? Why are they ignored? Unfortunately, there are some councillors that no longer respect those words. Instead, they are makers of interrogation of city employees, particularly in the law department, especially the women in the law department. In the 16 years of serving this city, first as an alderman and then city councillor, I can't even imagine that the council would allow one of their own to say things particularly publicly, such as accusing the city solicitor of backdoor deals, gutless, still licking her wounds, total debacle, and I quote, "She can go jump in the Connecticut River." Next, in the public service meeting, that same councillor stated that one ward councillor always plays the victim. He is the king of victimhood. And to me, in a public service meeting, that I was not in attendance, he said, and again, I'm paraphrasing, "The city councillor-elect has the nerve to come in here making low-class comments by a low-class person," when I merely asked whomever is the ordinance chair for the next term. Not sure who this was directed at, he stated again in public, "I'm tired of it. If you come after me, I'll come after you with both barrels." Just a few seconds. Then concluding with, "Looking forward to next year's debate, I'm gonna have fun." Councillors, this is not fun. We need to rise above the pettiness and do our work. Enough is enough, the public are tired of it. Maybe we can seriously think before letting our anger get the best of us, and remember those words that were put there for a reason so many years ago, "makers of law, makers of history." Thank you.
We do have one more. I missed it. Lisa Ball.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to approach with my department heads.
Look at all these humans. Wow, what a rock star crew here.
Good evening, everyone. I promise I will keep this brief. I know we're already at 30 minutes into this meeting. On behalf of the city employees, my fellow department heads, the various boards, and of course, our mayor, we are here tonight to pay tribute to three city councillors that are, this is their last meeting with us here tonight. Collectively, I think we've already heard tonight that they've served over 80 years to this city, and I will just say, I don't think I can say enough about these councillors in terms of what they've done, their service to this city, their dedication, and everything that they've managed to do for this city in those 80 years. I can personally tell you, though, that it's been my pleasure and honor to work with each of them, and I find each of them to be a gentleman, in fact, the definition of a gentleman, always showing respect, courtesy, and most importantly, kindness. Even when they don't agree with something that's happening in chambers, they are always respectful and kind, the definition of a gentleman. I want to say, I think that these are gonna be very big shoes to fill. I'm not sure that these shoes can be filled. You're gonna be very missed, Councilor McGivern, Councilor Tomlin, and Councilor McGee. I want to say thank you to all of you, but most importantly, I also want to say thank you to their families. Thank you for sharing them with us all these years, we're very, very grateful. And so tonight, we have a tribute that we have put together for each of them, and it's a different version of City Hall, a picture of City Hall, and it's signed by just about all of us up here, and then several others that couldn't be here tonight, but we'd like to present these tonight to the councillors. This one is yours. Do you want to come up for a picture? Do you want us to bring it down to you?
Yes.
How do we get up there?
Hop over the desk. I knew Juan could handle this.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Those are nice, that's nice. Juan, come on. I gotta get my picture with him.
We'll allow the new councillors, if they want to come in, newly elected. Councilor Devine. Carmen. She's talking. Also, just, we'll get to it in the president's report, but also retiring with us will be Councilor Puelo. So four of us will be walking out of here, and to everyone who has served, thank you very much. We'll get to that in the president's report. With that, we are on to, late on the table, any actions for those? Item one, item two. See none, off to item three.
Item three off the table.
Motion to take item three off the table. Careful, and order to refer, ordinance 2-421 be amended to include public hearings so that the public has the opportunity to truly appreciate the government. Recommend that be adopted. How are you? Agenda's over here. So item three is recommended to be adopted. Councilor...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. So we have the legal form that was provided to everybody, and there was a little technical question relative to the legal form, which got straightened out, so everybody should have had a chance to look it over, and it really was just to assure that all of the public meetings are at the 5 o'clock time or later, so that there's public access, and also added language to accept email communications. This was recommended unanimously by the committee to the council. Thank you. And so the motion would be to pass the first reading.
Motion is to pass the first reading, under discussion. See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second... Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call, vote yes, you're voting for item three as corrected.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Alden Adalvez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Puello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one?
Mr. President, if we could just revisit and take up as a package items one and two.
Motion is go back to items one and two, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Councillor McGivern?
It's coming to my attention, item number one, the union collective bargaining is not in agreement with the, with the way this proposal was packaged. I believe there may be some negotiations and talk about it. I would suggest at this point, it's the end of the year, that we just refer it back to the mayor, to, you know, through the auditor, and just return it to sender. Same thing with item number two, we've had a lot of discussions about Ezekiel's plan, and even though the last discussion in Finance Committee, we did come down to well under five hundred thousand dollars for a, for a plan similar to Ezekiel's with some, some major changes, especially with the thirteen patrol officers. At this time, the mayor is not going to go through forward with this particular order, so if we return it and allow Mayor Garcia, if he sees fit, to present something to, to the new city council coming in. So my motion is that we refer both back to the mayor via the auditor.
Motion to take item one and two and refer them back to the auditor. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. Four is communication from the mayor for Ms. Robert, two sixty-seven Walnut Street, Historical Commission member.
Public service?
Public service. Public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see here. Six is the minutes for November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Motion be received and adopt unless there's any suggested changes, corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Seven from the Office of Plain Economic Development. Motion be to...
Is this something DGNR?
I'd say DGNR.
Yeah.
DGNR, all those in favor?
I think that's a communication relative.
All opposed? From Anthony Delude, from the Holoche Retirement Board.
Receive.
Motion be received, all those in favor? All opposed? President's Report. One is the food. Cookies, everything. Donuts, coffee, up front.
We'll get some.
We're not taking it home.
Cupcakes and brownies in the back.
And wrap it up, there's brownies in back, there's cupcakes from Jeffrey, as well as Ryan Allen brought in and stuff. So if not all taken, we can always save it for City Hall employees tomorrow. Let's, update January sixth, which would be the city council party. So it's our year-end party, holiday party. January sixth, I'll work out the times and stuff, but that would be up at Donovan's.
The new place there.
And we still determine, you know, all the other stuff. Yep. Councillor, you got a question?
That's the Holyoke Grand Colleen Pageant, just in case for anyone.
Yep.
Okay.
Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Councillor Anderson Burgos. It's the, it's the initial, it's the initial for the contestants that want to go, want to get into the final five. It's the initial pageant at the high school. It's not the Grand Colleen Ball, it's the first step.
Mr. President, if I may?
Oh, Councillor Rivera, sorry.
That is also the day for the Three Kings event, our Oesperanzas. So if any family members would like to register their families, reach out to an Oesperanza, so they can register their family to receive a gift for that day. And also, they're doing gift wrapping for that day. They did it today, and they will be doing it tomorrow from nine AM to seven PM at four one three Main Street at El Mercado, to rift, to wrap gifts for that particular event, just in case if anybody's interested.
Okay. All right. Finally, this is the last meeting. We do have councillors that are leaving, and tradition, offer up time for them if they wanted to say anything. This is their time. Councillor Puello, I can go to you first if you'd like, if you have any, any comments, any words?
You can do whatever you want. I'll, J W, you want to come up here? I would mo' pram with that.
I appreciate it, though.
Want to get your steps in?
Yeah, yeah, I gotta close it. So good evening, fellow council members and residents of Holyoke. As we approach the end of this term, I'm honored to stand for you, to reflect on our collective achievements, and express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve as your councillor. During this term, we've tackled many important legislative issues that I'm very proud to highlight and have been a part of. The safety and security of our neighborhoods has always been a priority, and our council made the decision to approve the implementation of ShotSpotter technology, an innovative tool that helps law enforcement agencies detect and locate gunfire in real time. This approach, that's very proactive to deter criminal acts, and it underscores our commitment, this underscores our commitment to fostering a secure environment for all our residents. And I was proud to be here and to be able to cast that deciding critical vote, was very proud of that. In addition to our focus on public safety, we've also been unwavering in our advocacy for comprehensive public health initiatives, when we took a bold stance in challenging the state delegation on the issue of syringe access programs in our town. While this debate on this matter has been of serious contention, we've remained steadfast in our belief in directly proposing compromises such as a one-for-one exchange. Came down to a compromise. By engaging with our state representatives and continually advocating for the implementation of effective programs, we are affirming our dedication to the well-being of our residents and of our community. Furthermore, we filed orders to establish the Junior Reserve Officer Training Program, to reestablish it and bring it back to JROTC. This initiative seeks to instill leadership skills, discipline, civic responsibility in our youth. We always hear about our youth. We always hear, oh, well, what are, what are we gonna do? Well, here's direct programs. Providing them with valuable avenue for personal growth and development by nurturing the potential of young citizens, we're investing in the future leaders of our community and empowering them to make meaningful contributions. Moreover, recognizing the importance of our youth, more programs, we filed orders to establish comprehensive drivers' education programs in the city. We know we're under receivership, and the road to recovery has its challenges. My hope remains that we will someday have the leadership to accept and assist in promoting the implementation of these programs. Amidst these initiatives, we've remained steadfast in our commitment to supporting fiscally sound and careful measures that promote the long-term financial stability of our city. I've been very proud of my votes. My votes have consistently reflected our dedication to responsible financial management and the prudent allocation of resources to safeguard the economic well-being of Holyoke. As stewards of public funds, we should prioritize accountability and diligence in our fiscal decision-making, safeguarding the interests of our constituents and the sustainability of our city's finances. Very rare, I think, in my opinion. We saw that during the support, we saw that during the support that I gave to the CPA ballot question and wanting to give people the right to vote, very good order. If the election's good enough to reelect some of us, then it's good enough for people to vote on a tax. We saw that same type of thinking last week during the tax, the tax rate votes, and what rates I chose to support, very proud of that. As we look ahead to the future, it is imperative that we reflect and prepare ourselves on what's to come. We must also acknowledge the challenges that remain. The road is fraught with obstacles, and we have, and we have, we have to confront them. We have to, we have no choice. We continue to advocate for the betterment of our city. We must remain steadfast in our determination to address the issues and support councillors that do their homework, speak up passionately, and to be frank, simply make sense. People that make sense, people that just make sense. In closing, I extend my heartfelt appreciation to my fellow council members, city officials, and the incredible residents of Holyoke for your unwavering support and dedication. It's been an honor to be here, it really has been, and I know that Ward Two's in good hands. So thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Councillor Malda Velez?
Thank you, President McGee. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, say that I'm not in tonight because I got food for evening yesterday, and I've been in a very crappy situation all day, and hence the reason I'm also not on camera. But I did, you know, of course, wanted to be here tonight, being the last council meeting of this term, and my first term, and who knows what will happen next. But I think the word that I want to go into this, which is grateful, and being grateful for every single person, every single person in the city, you know, start off with the veteran councillors that are leading, President McGee, Councillor McGivern, Councillor Tomlin. Feels like we really leaned on y'all with your institutional knowledge and procedural knowledge to really try our best. You know, there's no handbook that we're giving, there's no sort of class that we are taught before getting onto the council, and it really falls on us and hope in leaning on veteran councillors a little bit to hopefully, you know, get the best choice and the best decisions in front of us. I also want to thank, you know, the four councillors that, or be grateful, I guess, in a way, for the four councillors, Councillor Jordan, Councillor Bartley, Councillor Bacon, and Councillor Puello. Not necessarily because we agree on everything, or not because I'll invite you over to my house or anything, but simply because you have taught me a lot of patience these last two years. I've always considered myself a patient person, and it was very tested, it was very tested these last two years. And, you know, and I have to acknowledge you are, you got voted on like anyone else. If the voters of Holyoke want to see y'all still be on there, then, you know, that's, we respect that. So I guess the gratefulness for just being you, for they taught me a lot about myself in the last two years, I guess. Grateful for councillor Juan Anderson Burgos, who was a veteran that came on with us and was, has, you know, been very supportive every step along the way. And I really want to give a huge shout out and a huge thankfulness, gratefulness, every word possible that would describe almost like my love for the other councillors that I came on with, which were Councillor Cocaine Givner, Councillor Tessa Murphy Rambeletti, Councillor Israel Rivera, and Councillor Jenny Rivera. So glad that we were able to lean on each other, really support each other, fill in any gaps that we have had for each other, and I'm so looking forward to seeing what y'all will bring to the council in the next, for the next term and going forward, whatever that may look like. Now that I'm done with the fellow councillors, I also just going to the city, going to the speakers that came up today, going to the community. I've always said, and I, you know, when I first ran my hashtag, Bernie, which is not me nosotros, not me us, because I'm a believer and I will always stick with it, that it's not just the thirteen councillors that get elected, it's not just the elected officials that get elected. In order to create a better world, a better society, a better Holyoke, it requires every single person in the community to do the best that they can with whatever their role is. It may not be an elected official, it may just be, being a parent, it may just be a teacher, it may be, be whatever role it is that you take on. I just hope that we go and keep working towards a Holyoke where everyone can feel and show up to their full capability and be their true selves. So thank you to Holyoke. You know, born and raised in this city, there's always, just can go off into my own experiences and my history, but, you know, having lived in other cities as well, one thing, one thing I do know about Holyoke is that we're a very unique city. We're a very unique people. People that know about Holyoke that I've met in other places are like, oh, well, you're from Holyoke? I'm like, yeah. And Holyoke is, we're a proud city, and I really appreciate every single one of us that are doing the work, even when it's not easy. And even if you're not doing the work, and you're taking a little break, and you're giving yourself a little space and time to rest, because it's also very important, just know that I appreciate every single person here in this community and Holyoke. I love y'all. I think the final person, I should, final people, you know, my family, but most importantly, my mom, who I, you know, she's a huge reason why I do a lot of what I do today, so I just want to give her, give a quick shout out. Oh, and neighbor to neighbor, of course, neighbor to neighbor. I don't know where I would be today if it wasn't for the support of community partners like in La Se, like Nueve Esperanza, Nueve Estrellas, every, every nonprofit, but most particularly Neighbor to Neighbor, that has taught me so much about the systemic issues that we are facing every day, and knowing that, again, people we do, just people that love the city, and we will continue showing up. And, yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm rambling at this point, but again, thank you. I'm looking forward to this last meeting, and I'm looking forward to what comes next. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, councillor. We hope you feel better. The start of that was kind of funny how you told us. I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that, I'm not gonna elaborate. Councillor Tomlin, come on up. Get up here.
Take me a little bit, but, don't trip. Little bit of knee issues and, you know, sciatica, but I'm gonna get through that. But really, really grateful, I'll be brief. There's a gavel. It's up here a couple times, get this meeting done quick, right? I mean, but I, first of all, I want to thank God for allowing me to be here, you know, and to serve my city. It's, it's really, it's humbling to be able to be here and do what I've done for the past total of twenty-five years. I've really enjoyed it. I've served a lot of, with a lot of councillors. I think it's probably well over a hundred, right, Kevin? Maybe a hundred and fifty over those years, and everybody had something to offer, you know, no matter what, who it was, where they came from, they all had something to offer. And on the bottom of that, they had a love for the city, for this community. And, and that's, that's what it is. Each one of us here has a love for this community, or we wouldn't be in this room. You know, we all have a love for this community. I was born and brought up here in Holyoke, you know? This is, this is my home. Been here all my life, and except for a few short years in, in the Army down in North Carolina, where I served for a few years, and with the Eighty-Second Airborne, I wasn't a paratrooper, I sort of chickened out, you know, but I was a quartermaster, as a support for the Eighty-Second Airborne unit. And I've had some friendships that I continue today, and that was when I got out in nineteen seventy-eight, and I, matter of fact, I just had a friend come up from, from North Carolina, and we had breakfast a little bit before Thanksgiving, and it was, it was awesome, you know, just to, just to connect, you know, to have that connection with somebody. And I feel I have that connection with every one of you in here and all the councillors that I've served with, you know? And it is something that's gonna carry with me for the rest of my life, it really is. And I want to thank my family, you know, for, everybody sees it, if it wasn't our family, we wouldn't be doing this. You know, the support and the time that they gave, you know, a lot of times we're down here, and every one of us knows we're, we're giving our time, and it takes away from our family, our kids, our grandchildren, our pets. It takes away from that, and, you know, they're there, they're steadfast in support of us, you know? And I want to spend a little bit more time with that family, you know? I have a beautiful wife, Puerto Rican wife, that, an island girl that, that I fell for at the Irish Festival back in nineteen, nineteen eighty-four, when it was up at the Holyoke Community College, you know, the last Irish Festival they had, and after that it was Hola Holyoke, you know? And it was, it's amazing, and that woman has been there and been there for me, and hopefully she's watching, I wanted to come down here tonight, but I just want to tell you, Nettie, that I love you very much, and I thank you for all you've done for me and for being there, you know, you're an amazing woman, and what she does for our family and her family is just amazing. And, and I hope I can be half the person that she is, and to give as much as she has given. And my two daughters, Rose and her husband Andy, and Jessica, and her son Mike, her husband Mike, you know, they've been there, they're both, both nurses, and I'm very proud of both of them, what they do, you know? One of them works in oncology down at the Demore Center for Cancer, and, and the other one works at Holyoke Hospital in the emergency room, and, and that's a tough job. She's working, you know, seven, she was here tonight, seven to seven, and I got a chance to, to bring my oldest daughter, Rose, a coffee last night at the hospital and food that her mother had made her, and, and my youngest daughter, today, her coffee down at the Demore Care Center, because I, I had an appointment down in Springfield, and, and just that short period of time that I could spend with them, because I don't see them every day, is important, you know? And my grandchildren I want to spend time with, Brandon, Julia, and Josh, who are all in the area. Brandon's coming home hopefully tomorrow from Ohio State, and Julia might be moving out west, she's our, she's like our model, you know? might be moving out west, she's our, uh, she's like our model, you know, um, she, she loves, she's the one that's on TikTok, you know, everybody's on that TikTok stuff, and, uh, she's, she's doing all the moves and all the dances and everything, and, and Josh is, uh, our favorite hockey player, you know, um, he plays for Amherst High School, and he's a sophomore, and he's as tall as me, and I want to be, spend time with them. Um, and the three youngest ones, uh, Jane, who's ten, and, uh, George, who's seven, and Nina, who is our surprise, about a year and a half, my daughter had her on Mother's Day last year, and she had her at home, because she did some midwifery work, and she said, um, we're having this baby at home, she had her in the, the pool, right at her house, and, uh, and I'm gonna see them tomorrow night, and I, I, I just can't wait, you know, um, we have this tradition of making, baking cookies for Christmas and dressing up in the pajamas and the whole bit, and, uh, and to be able to be with them in, in that time, and knowing that now I'll have, be able to spend more time with them. But it was, it was a love of the city that drove me into politics, you know, back in nineteen ninety-one, and, um, I was somebody that, in high school, was very quiet and shy and didn't really want to, wasn't outspoken, and I guess at that time you could have called me a nerd, you know, I wasn't a smart guy, but I was just, I wasn't really outgoing, I played sports, but I wasn't a superstar, you know, and I wasn't one of the in kids, you know, with the, the style and the dress, and, uh, and I wanted to be part of what happens in the city, you know, I, I, I played ball for the team, but I, I didn't start, I was sort of a bench warmer, I wasn't an outstanding athlete, but, um, so I sat on the bench, and I wanted to be part of what's going on, I wanted to be on, I wanted to be in the game, and politics got me in the game, you know, I, I was able to have my input in what goes on in the city, you know. A little story, my, my mother's father, uh, and, and mother both came over from Ireland, and my, my grandfather actually worked for the DPW here, probably back in the thirties and forties, and he, he pushed the broom, you know, the old guys that pushed the broom and had the, the bear on High Street, and they just dumped it in there, and that's what their, the pickup was. And my grandmother worked down here at the Skinner Mill, you know, because she did it in Ireland, and she, she was a silk weaver, and she made pretty good money, but, um, I think my grandfather didn't want to work in there where a lot of the men were at, he was a little bit jealous, and, uh, he wanted her to stay home, and he wanted to be at a breadwinner, you know, you know, but today, um, you know, both families have to work, you know, and, uh, that's important, you know. So if they could see me today, my parents and my, my grandparents, and that I, that I did serve the city for the number of years, um, I think they'd be very proud, you know, and, uh, and I'm a proud Holyoker, you know, no matter what ha- happens where I go, you know, I share the love of Holyoke and always claim the birthplace of volleyball. It's so important that we have that tag, you know, it's, it's so important that we have the tag of being born here, you know, that, that beautiful sport of being born here in Holyoke. And as somebody said earlier, rambling on, and I, I want to get out of here tonight to get home to my family too, but, um, I'm trying to think, uh, we talked about the employees and the department heads, and, uh, you know, they're the lifeblood of this community, they really are, you know, and a lot of times you, you don't see over the years me filing out of orders because I contact the department head or somebody that works in the office and try to get something done, resolved that way, and, uh, and that's what I did, and, no matter where I go, whether it's, uh, in the treasurer's office, or a DPW worker, or the guy working for the waterworks, I try to show that that worker is important, that that worker is valued, you know, um, you know, they, yeah, they get paid, but how often do they hear, you know, thanks for the job you do, you know, and I try to spread that to anybody I meet, any worker, um, whether it's, uh, you know, somebody on the street, uh, picking up the trash, or, you know, somebody that works in the assessor's office, you know, I, I try to show them that they're valued and they're important, you know. And I did that a couple weeks ago at Stop and Shop, and I, I thanked the clerk at the, the register, you know, thanks for being here, thanks for what you do, and my daughter was with me this time, and, uh, she says, Dad, why do you do all that, you know, embarrassed, and I said, if they weren't here, we wouldn't be able to get our groceries, you know, if they weren't here to take our money and to scan our things, we, we wouldn't be doing this, you know, and so wherever I go, I try to spread that message of, of, uh, concern and, and, and love for another human being for the job they do, and, uh, it's been a great, I tell people, you're gonna feel missed, you know, how, what are you gonna feel like? And it's, it's bittersweet, you know, it's been great, it's been a great tenure, it's been a great ride and being in this, in these chambers, and, and the people I've met, not just in, in here, but the people out there that, um, I've encountered over the past twenty-five years, has really taught me a lot about life, and, um, I'll be forever grateful for. Every one of you has a job to do, I, I, I thank my colleagues that are leaving, and, and, and thank the ones that are taking over, that are staying here and to continue the job that are elected to do, and, um, I'm not gonna be too far, I'm, I'm staying here, I'm not going anywhere, you know, they're gonna bury him here in Holyoke, you know, and, uh, I, uh, I want to be involved, and people say, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? And, um, you know, more time with family, and I definitely want to get involved with some veterans work, because, you know, I, being a veteran, and I, I know there's a lot of needs out there for veterans, and I really want to, you know, do that, uh, in a little, little bit of time, take a little break from it, and, uh, um, but that's definitely what, what I look for, you know, it's, it's not like trying to serve on the board or trying to get appointed to something in the city, I, I really want to help out veterans, and, uh, I want to thank you all, thank you all for your service, and, uh, it's really been a blessing.
Real quick, Mr. Tolman, can you elaborate on that photo real quick, and then a quick, like?
Ah, that's a secret, that's, I don't know, I got that when we, uh, Counselor Jordan and Counselor McGivern, uh, Counselor Plutumine and all, we went to take a tour of the, uh, Tai Carmody Reservoir, and, uh, there was a gentleman that worked for the Water Works that made a little flower, and he signed it on the back, and I, I put that out there, so, uh, you know, if, uh, if that's something you would like, I would definitely pass that on, that's, it's-
Totally, to keep it there and pass it on to the next one.
Yeah, really, I mean, you gotta leave something, right? Right, Tessa, we gotta leave something.
I got a picture.
But, uh, but it's been great, I, I, uh, I really want to thank you all, I want to thank the citi- citizens of Holyoke that continue to elect me over all these years, and, uh, I hope I did them well by, by the service I gave them, and, uh, really grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
I, I have an addendum. It won't be a speech, and, and, and I, I'm not gonna apologize.
Just don't speak three times, because we have a rule on that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain, Counselor Jordan. Um, I had some thoughts, which were interrupted by something, first of all, thank you for allowing my family to, uh, to be part of that and part of this. Uh, I, I think we all recognize, I said this already, what it means to family and allowing us to, uh, be here in the trenches is a big part of it, and it is a sacrifice, no matter how you look at it. Uh, my addendum, Mr. President, if I can, will be very short, because this is what I really wanted to focus on, and I'll do it quickly. Um, over the years, you know, the trenches are this room, the chambers, and, and to make it work, um, mayors are important, treasurers are important, department heads are very important, and, and I've, I think we've all cap- all accomplished understanding that, and I recognized that earlier tonight, but in this room, I, I have had the privilege of serving with city clerks that have been incredible, starting with the great Jim Shea, whose picture's on the wall, who just was probably the most knowledgeable, um, person I've ever met in government, and just incredible. Uh, Sue Egan was just incredible, she, she was Jim's assistant mentor, and she just stood up and, and did her job in a quiet way, but a very, very strong way, she was, uh, she was something else. Uh, Brenna McGee Erphy, you know, you came along as a young lady, and not confident in her speaking ability, you know, often asked some veterans, how do you speak so easily at fundraisers and events and things like that? And I said, you, you know what you're talking about, and you let your heart take over, and she's become not only a great city clerk in what she's accomplished, but she's also become a green, a good speaker, a great speaker, you know, all the, not just here, but in the media, even on those, what do they call them when they come over our, uh, over our telephone? Not Tic Tac, the City Message.
City Message, oh, yeah, yeah, on the phone.
Um, thank you, the city clerks are great, I thank them so much. Presidents of the city council, presidents of the Board of Aldermen, I started with Tommy Monahan, Mike Maddox, and, uh, I, when I took over, I was the last president for the Board of Aldermen, and the first president for what we now call the city council, not all happened in one term, but it, it was, uh, it was, it wasn't different in those days, but it was, there was fifteen of us, there were more committees, and it was, in a ways, a lot different. I, I give tribute and, and thank you, even though he ended twenty-six years of presidency to President Jordan, because he got on that podium, he took over, um, he had a vision, he understood the inner workings of the city council, and he is one of our hardest workers in terms of knowing what the issues are and doing research, and, and, um, that's gonna lead into something in a second, which, which is what I really want to say, but I, I thank you, Kevin. My biggest mistake as president in twenty-six years is somehow I should have made you chairman, so you would stop complaining about it. So, actually, when you were president, I realized I made a mistake that because you have the ability to run a committee, and I should have recognized that, I had some loyalty in some good people who were running the committees. Um, you know, when, the, when, um, Pres- I'm sorry, I lost my thought, but when, um, Kevin stepped down, our current president took over. Todd, um, thank you for the services, the council, but you bring those family values, those personal values, and you sometimes wear them on your sleeve, but you bring them to the podium, and, and you lead by example, and, and that's what a good president does. Um, the other night I had a bang the gavel, kinda hard, but I think everybody knows, I was just trying to get the focus onto the podium, talk to the president, don't talk to each other, and then, you know, when I was president, you could say just about what you wanted to, as long as you didn't get into a conversation and make it too personal. But Todd, thank you for sharing and, and leading us with those values and those mentors, because it's important. Uh, during that meeting, I'd just like to leave you, there's a difference between two, two Novembers ago and, uh, the new council being sworn in, and a new council about to be sworn in on January second. Uh, two years ago, one of the most green city councils was sworn in, and, uh, I think Brenna can attest to what I'm saying, and, you know, the number of brand-new city counselors is, was six, if I'm right, that doesn't happen often, I think in the seventies, once there was seven new Aldermen that were elected, and it, it means change, it means a lot of feeling, it means a lot of growing, and you have to do it a baptism by fire, so, you know, to this particular city council, congratulations to each of you, because your baptism is over, it's time to hit the round running. Um, next to me, you know, Megan Carmen over there, and, uh, our, our other newest, uh, counselor coming in, um, you know, you, you're gonna know it, but we have with you veterans coming back, and, and they know their stuff between Patty, Mike, and Howie, and, and they know the issues, and, and this is gonna be a, a good city council to watch. So here's my only thought for you, best of luck. When we did tax classification, I said to, last week, I said, look, we, we had done nine votes, I think our record for tax classification was fifty-four, if I remember, something like that, and I said, it's time for a pint to Guinness, we gotta figure this out, because two votes, I remember, Brenna can, can remind me, but it was six-six-one and six-six-one. One was at like four dollars and two cents, something like that, and one was at like four dollars and twenty-six cents, and I said, the trick now is just find the middle, and we're, we're all not gonna be happy on that vote, but you find that middle, you take the vote, everybody's got a little compromise, and you go home knowing you did your work. The next president, best thing you can do, it's not assigning seats, trust me, some people think the most important thing the president does is assign seats, it's, it's running the meeting, but it's not running the meetings, it's forming the committees. If you want shorter city council meetings, you make stronger committees, and more and more city counselors go to the committee meetings, get it out of your system at the committee level, get every question you know that you need answered, answered, whether it's a department head, the law department, outside, you know, get the answers, and the city council meeting tonight should just be why you're voting yes or no. Best of luck to everybody, thank you for putting up with me twice tonight, I guess I can't speak again all night, Kevin.
We'll suspend the rules, just for you.
Joe, I was, I was looking at it, and you did crack it.
Yeah.
Just kidding, great.
He, I already checked it out, he's only kidding.
Uh, to Counselor Puelo Manal Valdez, um, thank you very much for your service, it's truly been an honor working with you, and for your vote to allow me to be up here to work with you and, and guide us through this, I am deeply grateful for that, and I wish you all the best in your, in your future. Um, real quickly, I said my piece back in March, and yes, I did wear it on my sleeve, uh, but I would be remiss if I didn't just, you know, get some things out.
Absolutely.
Uh, one is, I'm gonna miss certain things here, I'm gonna miss Counselor Tolman passing the second reading, it is just like a given, anytime first reading's passed, Counselor Tolman's been there for finance, but also he's been a mentor and a friend, and anytime I had a question or anything, I went to Peter, I went to Joe, and they were always there to guide me through it, so anytime anyone in this room would be like, oh, wow, Todd knew what he was doing, I went to them first, so, you know, give up the, the information. But I'm gonna miss certain comments that are said in this chamber by a certain person. Let me give you a, kind of like hints. John Q. Taxpayer, skunk at the lawn party, this isn't our first rodeo. Good steward. Now, mind you, the list I'm looking for, it's been what I've been working on for two years. Camel's nose under the tent, I love that one, I really do like that one. Pig pile, that was all right. Um, FFF, that was that one meeting that just came flying out, and I, I'm gonna leave it there, I'm not gonna go any further. Uh, tale of two cities, this is the hair on the fire moment, city council under the bus, this isn't a cookie cutter, one size fits all, poor as church mice, the masterpiece is still on the canvas, this is not ready for prime time. Um, these are some of the comments from Counselor Jordan, I loved-
Where can you go with this quality of entertainment?
These, I, there used to be a store down the way that used to do, uh, bingo, and they would, uh, they would use certain quotes by certain people, not just Kevin, but these were some, I, I remember them doing that, and it was bingo, and if, if you said it that night, that would be the letter, and they started bingo up. Um, the reason I bring these up is, you know, one, they're, they're funny, and they're, two, they're, you know, it's part of history, but I enjoyed working with each and every one of you. Little things like that really made the day, so where we're fighting, we're getting emotional, and you should, as I've said, and people have now kind of took on, when you're done with the day, you walk out the door, go get Guinness, go get a coffee, I don't care what you get, but just enjoy each other, because later on in the week, you're gonna see each other at another event, a basketball game, a soccer, whatever it is, just enjoy yourselves. This is a job, we do it, we do the best for our constituents, we try as hard as we can based on limited resources, at the end of the day, you do your best. So these little things that I love, I just like sharing it, because, you know, last time was very emotional. Um, to me, I did say it, but they said I didn't, uh, to my mom, my dad, and my brothers, couldn't be here without you, so thank you. Um, to Joe, um, my president's step-in, uh, thank you for everything, Joe. Um, you didn't break the gavel, but you have been, uh, amazing, I, I have lost words on what I can say, uh, but you have been an absolute friend, and I wouldn't be here without someone like you, so thank you. Uh, finally, I did receive this last year from my kids, they said, hey, Dad, we got you something, it's picture frame, it's very pretty, and then you press it. Yeah, they got extra gifts this year, I'm not gonna lie, they got a lot of extra gifts, but it's, that's where I'm going, that's, that's my new focus. So from all, from me to all of you, thank you for your friendship first. We had our battles, we did our thing, congratulations on being a counselor, once a counselor, always a counselor, I've said that. I will see you out on the street, I love you, I respect you, and I thank you for everything that you do, and I wish you nothing but the best. For the new counselors coming in, you'll love it here, uh, some, some of the troublemakers like Counselor McGivern and Counselor Tolman are gone, so it'll be a lot smoother, uh, and you'll enjoy it, but if you ever- enjoy it. But if you ever have a question or need help, you can call us. You can call me, I won't throw them under the bus, but you can call me. I'd be more than happy to help you and walk you through stuff, a- as I do know rules, unfortunately, and I'm boring. Uh, to the new councillors that came in and I threw you under the bus and made you chairs and tried to do stuff to catch you up, I'm very proud of you. And I mean that, I'm very proud of you. You did an amazing job with a short period of time. And I've said that to many people throughout the community, uh, to watch how you've come from being newly elected to where you are today. It's amazing. And you should be, um, you know, very proud of what you have done, your accomplishments. So, with that, we do have an agenda to catch up on. We do have, uh, I, I just asked one thing, one thing, do not leave when everything's done, I'd like you in back at some point. But thank you. So, we have-
Mr. President, can we, uh, can we take like a two-minute recess to get a cupcake, or what? There's plenty back there.
Do I need to cry?
I need, yeah, I need to cry, I need to.
I wanna Guinness.
Well, how about we, well, go, if you want something, go ahead, we'll move in and out, and as votes come up, I'll just tell you and we'll walk back in. All right, so Committee on Ordinance, who was referred in order per constituent request, they install a handicap sign at 245 Long Street, recommend it be adopted, so receive, adopt, pass first reading, councillor vacant.
Okay, I was just going to suggest that we suspend rules and take 9A and B as a package.
We'll do that as well, so 9A and B as a package, all those in favor, opposed. So, that was A. B is for 34 North Summer Street, which is a handicap sign, also recommend it be adopted. So, motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading, councillor vacant.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. These were reviewed by the Disabilities Commission and recommended for approval, and the legal form is complete, so they're ready to go. So, motion to pass the first reading.
Thanks. So, motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for A and B.
Veken?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Is- Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
12 yeas, unanimous vote.
We got Givner and McGivner.
I got confused.
Waiter of voter, prove that. I would like a motion to go out of order to 13D, if possible.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Committee on DGR, who was referred a special permit application for O'Connell Professional Nursing Services for 1763 North Hampton Street, recommend it be, be granted with the following conditions, permit, uh, upon the current lease remain in the tenancy, the owner of the property shall supply sufficient parking to meet the criteria relative to the overlay district. Uh, motion is to receive, adopt, grant the special permit, Councillor Murphy Rumbelletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, we, uh, the Committee on DGR, um, discussed this at a couple DGR meetings. Um, we had a public hearing. Um, the, uh, applicant applied for a special permit to, um, create professional offices, um, at, uh, the property, uh, which is 1763 North Hampton Street. Currently, uh, it has been Gallagher Real Estate, that is the owner, Paul Gallagher, who's here this evening, thank you for being here. And, um, the applicant was O'Connell Professional Nurse Service, O'Connell Care at Home. Um, Danielle is here as well, and, um, we had the opportunity to hear from them about what their plans were. Um, basically, uh, the, the space itself, um, would be used, uh, for the, um, nursing services. Uh, it would mainly, it would just be for, um, uh, employees. There wouldn't really be customers coming, because it's an at-home care nursing agency. Um, so, we had a, a good conversation about, um, what it would look like, it would be about two to three employees. Um, the hours would be 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Um, wait, nope, sorry. Now I'm reading my other notes from my other DGR meeting. Let me take it back. Um, it would be four employees at most. Um, we talked about the signage. Um, then we had some follow-up, because the planning department did not get to review the plans, and so that's why it was continued. Um, and so, uh, there was discussion at our meeting last evening that was, um, more about, uh, these conditions that were mentioned by the president. Um, the, uh, property itself is located within the, uh, professional office overlay district, the Pood, if you will. And, uh, yeah, that's a thing. And, um, so, we, we discussed, we, we got a letter from the planning board, um, that had some recommendations and some things that were brought to our attention. Mainly, um, the, the most, uh, pressing one, it seemed, that we needed to address was that in the zoning ordinance section, um, 8447, the applicant is the owner and occupier of the premises or has a valid purchase and sale agreement. Um, and there were people in the council chambers who, uh, discussed this point. Um, it's definitely something that we discussed, perhaps should be looked at, um, if, if it needs amending. The original intent of that criteria is well-understood. You know, it's important that we have responsible property owners within this professional office district. Um, so, there was a robust discussion, um, and, you know, ultimately, the committee wanted to ensure that, um, the, uh, property owner would continue to remain as, um, Gallagher, um, and that the tenant would need to be O'Connell Care at Home. Um, you know, and we talked about making sure that the, um, the parking requirements are met. We discussed, you know, if, if there's a need for, um, any additional, uh, uh, variances, you know, that is something separate that needs to be addressed. So, overall, it was a, a, a good discussion, um, and I'm sure there's others on the council who would like to weigh in, but that's my update as the chair. Um, and overall, the committee voted, um, to recommend that we approve the special permit.
Councillor Bartley?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. Uh, that was a good summary. I, I just want to just point out a couple, couple brief things. What, what we're voting on is a, is a special permit under, under the city ordinances and the professional overlay district, which is a, at this stage, is on North Hampton Street, which is pretty much a, uh, key economic, uh, viaduct for, for the city. And we've had a lot of good businesses come in. So what we're doing by considering granting a special permit is, we're asking, uh, or the petition is asking, asking us, we want, we realize this is a residential property, but we want to have a, a business in, in the property. So, generally, the special permit as required by ordinance, and that was pointed out in the, in the, by the planning board, and that's why we tabled it the first meeting, because we were, we were about to go out of order, and I'm glad that we did table it, and we, we went in proper order. And we had a very good opinion from the planning board that I thought was enlightening and helpful. And essentially, what they said as the, the major issue is that it seemed that the ordinance kind of went to ensure that the owner of the property is also an occupant of the premises in which the special permit is granted. In this case, that is not happening. However, we, we are the special permit granting authority. So, we have the ability not to overlook it, but we ask for, and we were provided a, a written lease, a written contract between the property owner and the less C. So now we've got a great marriage. We've got Gallagher Real Estate, and we've got O'Connell Care at Home, two great Holyoke businesses that want to stay and expand in the city. I did point out to Attorney Bissonette last night that it might behoove us to consider amending the ordinance for the professional overlay district to encapsulate the issue that we had before us last night, so we don't have to go through the gymnastics of what we, uh, ended up doing for this. I, I don't think it's a big deal, I, I think it's a reasonable amendment. I, I will file that at some point in January or February, when we get around to a regular business. Um, otherwise, uh, and that's just a technical part, otherwise, I, I mean, Mr. President, you pointed out last night, they're beautiful properties, they're gonna be a credit to North Hampton Street, this is what the overlay district is supposed to be, preserving the integrity of these properties, enhancing the neighborhood, and I think that's really, I, I think in my time here, that is, I think, the third one that I've, that I voted to approve. And they've been winner after winner, and I think this is gonna be another winner. So I, I hope that everybody will be in, in support, and I hope my summary, uh, somewhat, somewhat helps. Thanks.
Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to add the importance of the overlay district, which goes from the People's Bank, former Yankee Peddler, across to, uh, almost to, uh, well, right to, uh, Dwight Street, it encompasses all of Route 5, North Hampton Street. The purpose was, we, we were receiving a number of change, zone change requests to put business, uh, property, businesses on, uh, on residential property. A dentist's office near the cemetery went for a residential office zone, which wasn't that controversial, but does change the possibilities of use. There were other requests for, and then some business highway requests, some got denied. And we recognized, you know, the attraction to bringing commercial business to this part of North Hampton Street, but we also recognized, and Jack Hunter was the, uh, planning board director at the time, that there needs to be a way to protect it, so we don't see what happened in West Springfield, we don't see what happened in, uh, other communities where arteries, main arteries become nothing but commercial, and it loses the entire residential part of the neighborhood, because there are some beautiful homes on this stretch. They are big, they are hard and expensive to maintain, they are beautiful, and we want to keep the residential character, and that's the idea of what, uh, Jack Hunter found, and what we adapted, was you have to do it by special permit in an overlay district. And Councillor Bartley summed up a lot of the, uh, the challenges. There, there's only six or seven of them. Uh, this is the second change of hands, which is what we'd never prepared for. And so we dealt with that at the committee level, and, and we do need to tweak the ordinance to deal with in the future. But the importance is, the change of hands is not, and this is obviously not bad, two good companies, you know, O'Connell, you know, I, I said welcome home, being a little bit sarcastic, but O'Connell and, uh, Gallagher, you know, realty have been around for, for a long time, well-established, well-known, and good, good Holyoke families on top of it. Mr. Gallagher invested, I, I, I'm gonna throw a number up, I know it's 150, 120, $500,000 at least into that property, and lived up to the overlay district characteristics and requirements of the parking, those signs, whatever, whatever we asked, he kept it and, and kept the residential part of that property. You know, on the outside, you hardly know it's Gallagher, you know, real estate, and that's, that's the importance of the overlay. But we also have to protect Mr. Gallagher's investment, because that's also an investment in Holyoke. So there's gotta be some tweaking, but on the other hand, tonight, I think we're, we're doing a great job by, uh, granting the special permit, and thank you for listening, because I've been talking way too much tonight, Mr. President.
That was your third, you're done. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Uh, anyone further? Councillor Tolman?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm very much in support of this. I go back to Mr. Gallagher probably about 20 years, when I was early on in my tenure in the council, and, uh, thank you Chairman for, Chairwoman for explaining that to us, and Councillor Bartley, um, very important to keep that, uh, the integrity of the neighborhood there, and to keep a couple of good, uh, business families in, in that community, in our community to, to, to keep going on, and, uh, I really wish, um, all the best, uh, in that, in this endeavor.
Councillor Anderson Burgos?
I'll be super quick. Welcome to Ward 6, please let me know if you ever need anything.
Senior, and further motion is to, uh, approve the special permit with the conditions as were read. Clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Veken?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
If you vote, you approve the special permit. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Thank you, take care.
We'll go back to 9C. Uh, Committee on Ordinance, who referred an order with community support or that trash recycling, uh, update reflect the following, there's the conditions, it's a long one, uh, recommend has been complied with, councillor vacant.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the ordinance as amended.
Second. Motion, motion is received and not passed as amended, pass the first reading, so councillor vacant.
Yes, so the motion is to pass the first reading.
Second.
And this was a pretty straightforward, actually, issue, but the concern that had it come back to committee was that it lacked some flexibility to address unique concerns in the community by certain citizens that might have unique physical situations or resident situations. And so, what you see in the revised legal form is just that we have built in a process whereby people can appeal to the Director of Public Works and secondarily, if needed, to the Board of Public Works. We don't anticipate that this is going to be a big issue, but we wanted to ensure that there was a path for citizens that might get in a situation. Um, I want to say that our Director, Carl Rossi, came and gave a very good presentation. They have indicated consistently that they're working with residents, switching out size containers to meet their needs, um, and really taking a pretty flexible approach and posture. And it was also emphasized that they are really putting an emphasis on educating the public, because it was acknowledged that under the prior leadership, the department had gotten away from the recycling, and so they're really stepping up notices, education, and reminders to residents, again, I think in a constructive, educational way, um, to get us back on track as a community, to be good for the environment and good for our economics. So, there you have it.
So, motion is, oh, Councillor Jordan?
Yeah, just a-
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, okay, all right. Uh, just briefly, under discussion, I did want to say that I thought the city council did a nice job here in consultation with the law department and the department head to, to provide the type of flexibility that our constituents were looking for. Um, I think whenever you start a major rollout of a program like this, um, you never quite are sure how the public is gonna react, you can only hope for the best. And, um, I think the goals and aims of the new trash, uh, collection system that we have, um, are really premised on some really good, um, goals and objectives. Obviously, workplace safety, uh, encouraging recycling, um, making sure that, uh, we're improving the cleanliness of the city, um, that we're ensuring greater accountability, uh, so that we don't have people who are non-residents dropping things off on streets, other than the residents themselves, that this is a service for the people of Holyoke. And, um, but on the other hand, when we do create a system like this, uh, there's the concern that you do need a, a degree of, of uniformity to it, but like any rule, uh, across a vast of 40,000 people, you need to have certain, um, flexibility to accommodate and adjust for certain unique family circumstances, unique, uh, physical, uh, conditions, peoples, uh, take into consideration people with particular age, infirmity, disabilities, things of this, all of this, um, considers this. And I thought we had a great conversation in ordinance, um, the, uh, Carl did a phenomenal job of working with us and provided tremendous, uh, feedback, and the law department, the law department did a great job of capturing that conversation in this new ordinance. I think this is just what the doctor ordered here, and, uh, look forward to this being a continued, uh, success.
Councillor Maldonado Velez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to take, um, a quick minute and just thank Carl for coming down to the committee meeting. Um, I didn't really say much of that meeting, but, you know, based on the discussion between the other committee members and him, I think it, it just showed how well he works with the council and really gets the language, um, so it can work for many people. Um, what I got from it, I think the two big things that I really got from that meeting was, uh, you know, the first thing is, this is something that Carl, um, took on, you know, it's something, this is a program that was planning and being started before Carl came on, so I know, you know, we have a big turnover in our, in our, in our department head, so I guess my hope is that he stays on longer than just a year or two, which has been sort of- know, the first thing is, this is something that Carl took on, you know, something, this is a program that was planning and being started before Carl came on, so I know, you know, we have a big turnover in our, in our, in our department head, so I guess my hope is that he stays on longer than just a year or two, which has been sort of the, the norm, I guess, because to his point, this is just the first step, you know, we're talking about trash, next step, we're talking about recycling, we're talking about education. So this is something, you know, one of the biggest concerns that I hear from a lot of this, people in our city, is the trash. I think this is something that everyone has probably heard in talking to the, to their residents and to their constituents, and I really appreciate Carl taking these steps and making it clear that this is not just the only step that's going to be taken, there's going to be more steps coming along. I just hope that the council really supports DPW and making sure that the education, the recycling, everything else that's coming along the way really gets supported. And I think the last thing I just wanted to say, because it was my question that night, because we were talking about the bulk waste and having to do access for renters, so the answer is renters do have access to bulk waste, you can just go to DPW and get a card that's good for a year, you just need to bring your license, your valid state ID, and a utility bill, a utility bill and a lease agreement, and then you have to pay a $10 fee. So I just wanted to put that information out there, because I know right now a lot of renters think only homeowners have access to the bulk waste, but renter, us renters also do have access as well. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had asked that we get another look at this in committee, and I thank everyone for doing it. I think we had a, a good discussion, the tweaks are obvious. I don't think, some of the written changes were, were stuff that Carl had already said the first meeting, but were put into the ordinance, which, which is important, but the conversation we had in committee, I think was what most important, and Counsel Maldonado Velez just said it perfect, is, you know, we're a city that provides services, and if city residents understand why, need, desire, and respect our trash pickup service, both at the curbside and the bulk option, and, and our yard waste option. Not all communities in the area have that. Matter of fact, very few communities in, in the area come even close to us in terms of what we do, and, and you can just talk to anyone who lives in one of the surrounding community, communities. One of the things that I pushed for, it's not changed in the ordinance, however, I, I think in the words of Carl Rossi, I think it's most important, he, first of all, is behind this entire ordinance, the changing of the ordinance, we already had an ordinance, but behind the changing of this ordinance, and the, despite the fact that it went out a little bit before the, the, we got the chance to look at it, the, the, the whole purpose of this is to promote recycling and to pick up, be efficient picking up trash, both for the employees and for the, for the homeowners, and for the renters, for everyone. And, and the purpose of being efficient, it ma, it makes sense with the 96 gallon, but with the option to downgrade to a half of that, or downgrade to a 35 if you so desire. You can only have one, one trash receptacle though, which is what I challenged, and he did not back down. And again, he said, if everybody recycles the way they're supposed to, 100%, 96 gallons is more than enough for, and he cited some numbers of even his family back in Pennsylvania, was it?
Jersey.
Jersey, it's kind of close. And, and I listened, and I understood, and I thought about our recycling habits, we are fantastic with glass and plastic, we're probably, you know, we're good with cardboard, but we could be better with paper. So we're, we're trying to work on, in my household, a little bit better on what we do. But he said, if someone is doing the recycling right, and we, you know, we're going to enforce it, and they have a need, they still have a need for whatever, you know, a real legitimate need for an additional, maybe not as big as a 96, but additional, he will consider it on a case by case, and that, that's all I needed to hear, because his intentions are, are not just well thought out, they're backed up by, by example, they're backed up by other, you know, studies of other communities and studies of what Hoyoke needs and what he's pushed forward. So I, I will now be more than happy to vote for this this evening, and thank the ordinance committee for giving me a chance to have that second discussion with him.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Mr. President, I'm just going to couple, couple things, so relative to the, the trash bin itself, I, I, I think a big tip of the hat goes to Mayor Murphy, who used a pretty large portion of ARPA funds to procure the 96 gallon drums, and it was, it was his initiative that got this going, and I, I don't think that's, we don't say that enough. The second piece is relative to recycling, Carl pointed out that we have one of the poorest rates of a city our size in the Commonwealth, that's got to be improved. In terms of what the prior speaker said, I, I appreciate that, that it was pointed out that renters get a, a bulk waste card, but that's an ordinance that we passed here eight years ago. So we did the work here in committee and in city council, and that was proposed by the former Ward Two Counselor. That's how that got before us, and then we sailed it through after, after a fashion. So that's how that came before us. The important piece, I think, the only takeaway I really had from that, is that it should be promoted more on the city website and wherever else the DPW does its work. So if that word is not getting out, then that's on the DPW and the Board of Public Works that needs to promote these things. The other pieces are, the two key things are, one is something I proposed at the prior full city council meeting, relative to a, you, you just don't give all the authority to one person if there's an appeal, the odds of having an appeal, as we talked about, are probably zero, but nevertheless, there is an appeal process. And the key takeaway, and I love the language, I, I'm not even sure who it was, it, it might have been Counsel Givner, it might have been Counsel Bacon, I just don't remember, but it was so helpful to say, you know, we're getting hung up on 35 gallons and 64, and who cares? And, and, but they came out with, you know, alternately sized rubbish receptacles. Now, that's a beautiful phrase, because it covered, it covers it. And for us to get to that phrase, Mr. President, sometimes you can't have a one-minute meeting, sometimes you can't just rush stuff through. That's why I've said repeatedly, if you have regular order, if you think it out and discuss it in open forum, sometimes it's not pretty, I get it, sometimes we get emotional, I get it, but ultimately, we get a result. I'm sorry, I'm sorry somebody's feelings gets, got, got hurt, I, I guess I was a target of a few things tonight, but that's okay, we'll deal with that next term. The fact is, we got a result, I think it's going to be a winner for the city and the residents. Thank you.
Counsel Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add to the comments and point out that there was also a cost savings that's also, that's already being recognized, and I think it's good for our community to recycle, but it's also going to be good for our budget, so the more recycling we do, the less expensive it will be to get rid of Hoyoke's trash. Thanks.
Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, I want to thank the ordinance committee for all the work they did, I think it might have been a couple of meetings. Rarely do I get down here for the meeting, but I do watch it on TV, sometimes they go a little bit late, and it's almost like one of my favorite shows, I can't turn it off, you know, there's, I said, geez, what's going to happen next? It might be an hour and a half, but it's, I said, I want to get to the end of this.
You need professional attention.
Yeah, and it's not my, I mean, it's like one of my favorite shows, but no. But it's important, I, I think Counsel Bartley said it well, where, you know, we got to get that out there, the word out there, we got to put it out there on the website and wherever, the, the DPW about the importance of recycling and how we can do a better job. And I heard during that meeting about the yard waste, and I use that often to take items down there, maybe, you know, I think we get like seven times a year with our card, and, and I've been going probably the last five weeks down to the, the compost plant, you know, with my leaves, you know, barrel film, the barrels that I had, and they're very friendly in, in doing that, so a lot of communities don't have that, and we have that, we should be very grateful that we do, and I think this is a great ordinance, the way it's worded out, and it's, and it is a savings, as Counsel Givner said, you know, the more we recycle, the better it is for our budget, so thank you.
Counsel Rivera.
I guess for me, the last thing I would say is add to that, cost savings piece, I think the most important piece for us is, especially when taxes are rising and costs are going up, is just making sure that we can try to keep it down as much as we can, and through trash, that's the easiest, what is, what is one of the phrases that I hear people say, low hanging fruit, right? That, that's low hanging fruit in a sense, right? So I don't understand, like, why it's taken us so long to get to this point, I think it, somebody mentioned prior administration kind of walked away from the recycling piece, but I think I'm next for the next, I'm ready for the next round, which is the recycling piece now, right? To make, to make sure that we can save money more by, by, by trying to do more recycling and increasing recycling and doing the education on recycling, because we're going to actually see the savings on that, and later on, be able to capitalize on the savings in different ways. Thank you.
So the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor? All opposed.
Motion to pass the second.
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor? All those opposed.
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. Clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for nine C.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Kenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
If you vote you approve that one. D, E, and F has a package.
Sure.
Motion to take up D, E, and F as a package, spending rules, all those in favor? Opposed. D, Committee on Orders who referred, that Cook and Company be invited into future finance, subcommittee to review recent health insurance analysis, complied with. Committee on Orders who refer, nor that the ordinance committee invite in the mayor, DPW superintendent to review Chapter 74, complied with. F, DPW Law Department coming to ordinance, flexibility of new trash bin program, complied with. Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the first one that I'll address is the summary that Cook Company provided to the committee. I will not go over the entire summary, because it is available on the recording, but I will say this, Su Shaloo gave a very good, comprehensive report to the committee, and it really provided us with the nuts and bolts that the mayor and the department have been grappling with relative to trying to get their arms around the very expensive health insurance issues. So it was quite informative, and the biggest takeaway that I got from it was that we're looking very hard at self-insuring, which is an interesting concept, and so significantly, Quentin Donahue, who is the Chair of the Section 19 Committee, also spoke at the meeting, strongly in favor of pursuing a very thorough due diligence ongoing to self-insurance. And one of our brokers, Steve Dowd, also spoke to us relative to that whole endeavor. So it really came across as a really solid team effort, with people having put a lot of due diligence into looking at this, and so really, we're saying that it was complied with, that we received the update. There's a lot of negotiating that will potentially go on moving forward, which we will not be a part of, but we have left it that they will come back to us when it's timely for them to come in and give us an update as to where they're at and what the next steps in the best interest of the city might be. And it does look like, if it's done well, and the way that they described it to us, it's a fairly straightforward thing to do well, and we would be building off of the fact that we self-insure for our dental insurance already by expanding more holistically to the whole health insurance. So very interesting, very informative, and well done. I don't know if any other committee members want to comment further, but that's my thumbnail sketch.
Counsel Rivera.
Well, I mean, if, I would, I would let Counsel Jordan go first, probably, I'll go after you, in case you're going to say the same thing I say.
All right, hopefully not.
Counsel Jordan and Counsel Rivera.
Uh, yes, just a couple additional points, I thought the Chair did a phenomenal job summarizing. I do want to just say a couple things. One, compliments to the mayor for being willing to tackle a very large and important issue. If we're going to really move the needle on the budget, we have to tackle large programs of the city, right? We have to do retirement, right? We have to do workplace injuries, right? One of them is addressing our health insurance cost and, and bending that curve. Well, in looking at this, I thought a lot of great work was done by a number of people, and the, you know, the tires were kicked on a number of options. One of them was to look at the GIC, and under the current matrix, it would not ultimately be the numbers bared out, a large savings, it's a potential savings, but not to the potential scale of how self-insurance had come out. And if we do it right, with the proper reinsurance for high-risk claims, we have the potential to move the needle, to the tune of actually a couple of million dollars, and so that's, that's real money. Now, it should be noted that number one, we're going to have to keep those type of savings in this trust fund, and while the mechanics of it all will be handled by the administration, make no mistake about it, this council would have to take a vote to approve the trust fund, okay? So you will have a large say on if this occurs, so begin to start taking your notes for a future vote down the line, if this is done. It, it's conceivable, and I've asked that certain benchmarks be put into place so that we keep to, you know, an actual making of a decision. I would hope that we could do something for this coming July 2024, so that if the follow-ups that we took away from this meeting and from the report of the consultant occur between now and February, and then the next, the recommendations of the Section 19 Committee and the mayor, then we would be in a position to be able to take some votes, hopefully, maybe perhaps as early as April, certainly by May. So this is going to be an important issue for the council to consider at the beginning of the new term, look forward to that conversation, and it is definitely an opportunity, if done right, to save the taxpayers some money, so more to come.
Counsel Rivera.
So thank you. Some of the stuff that I was going to say was covered, mostly the piece was the trust fund piece for me. It's interesting to find out that this couldn't be done and can potentially save some money. I think for me, the question would be is how much compared to the actual GIC piece, mostly because, like Counsel Jordan referred, our administration would have to take up a lot of the administering of the funds, and with regards to managing the trust fund account. That is something that we don't do now as a city, we do do it in, in a very, very small scale when it comes to the dental piece, but this would be much larger, and the city would actually be on the hook for any liabilities that may come upon, come upon us throughout this process. So it's a risky situation, but it sounds like it's one that, and down the line, if we manage it right, we could actually be able to manage costs on health insurance, depending on how we do things. But I, I, I behoove us to kind of pay attention to what Counsel Jordan said, with paying attention to things that are coming down the road, to make sure that we're all ready for when the vote comes up, and we can make an informed decision on what's best for the city overall. Thank you.
Counsel Jordan.
All great points by Counsel Rivera. I would only add to that, I think as you do your homework on this, you'll begin to see that it's a generally, most very large employers, government employers, private sector employers are largely self-funded, so I think if you, this is generally the norm, and so as opposed to fully funded, but the key is, do you put the safeguards in place so that one year, what you have to be guarded against is not spending or trying to cut in the years where you're profitable, that is, you know, you start off at 100% of the premium in versus the claims paid. So say you only pay out 80%, you can't really tap into that 20, at least for a number of years, until you build up a cushion for the year that you go to 105%. So that's something you need to consider in doing the analysis, and what they do is, over this period of time, actuarially, and this is how you, it's very important how you set the premium to make sure that it's correct, and when you do this over a long period of time, and you build up this cushion coupled with your reinsurance, that is, the policy that you purchase to guard against the million-dollar claim, you know, God forbid somebody gets cancer and they whack the fund for a million dollars or whatever, you know, you have a cap at, say, $250,000 in claims over that, you know, that, these are all built into the cake, and there is an administrative fee, Counsel Rivera is correct, that you would be paying, instead of paying Health New England a fee to be fully funded, you would pay them a TPA, third-party administrator fee, typically around 6% to 8% of the amount of the pool that's paid to handle the claims and the processing and picking up the phone when a person says, hey, my doctor bill didn't get paid, what's going on? So, uh, again, a lot more to go, but, um, you can take some comfort in knowing that this is very common. In fact, I would say it's the most common form to do it among large employers, um, to do it this way, that have a sufficient enough pool. And fortunately, in our case, we do have a sufficient enough pool to, to do something like this. And it should technically result, in the long run, in reduced premiums, um, because the fear, the theory being that the insurance company charges you more as fully funded because they're taking on that risk. But when they're only the third-party administrator, they're charging you the real cost of the claims, as opposed to saying, well, I'm gonna charge you extra because I may have the bad year and absorb that. So, uh, as a tendency, you tend to get the best premium rates. So, again, uh, m- more to consider, it's gonna be, uh, a good dialogue for us to have.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I don't want to sound indirect, but do we know if any other municip- and this is to Counselor Jordan, through the president, to Counselor Jordan, or, uh, Counselor Rivera, or Counselor Bacon, do we know if other municipalities are following the same suit? Like, have they been doing this as well?
Yeah, yes.
Just, we can kind of learn from them?
And, and to my knowledge, the state itself does it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so D, E, and F are complied with? Uh, do we, well, that was D, so an E, D, and F report?
Yes. So E and F are pretty straightforward. They were companion orders that went with the trash matter that we've already dealt with. And because in the case of E, where it was to review how it would reconcile, we have made things reconcile by amending our ordinance already tonight. And the nine F was looking at the flexibility issue, which is why it got sent back to committee. So in both of those cases, those are now found to be complied with, and these all came from committee unanimously found complied with. Thank you.
So D, E, and F are complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And that concludes ordinance.
And that is ordinance.
Thank you, ordinance committee.
Thank you, ordinance committee, and Counselor Bacon for chairing that committee. Thank you very much for two years of a lot of hard work.
A lot of work.
Thank you very much. Uh, before I go to finance, I didn't do it for tax title because I wasn't here. I was on the road, that was tradition. Yeah, put my coat on.
All right.
You used, this used to fit me. God, I lost a lot of weight. All right, so we're back.
Still fit, that's.
Still fit, uh, it's not as, not as snug as it used to be.
Christmas jackets.
All right.
Does this mean, does this mean we can break out the garters now?
Yeah, it's in the locker. All right, so, uh, finance.
Another rule change, right, Joe?
Uh, let's see, uh, command and finance, five thousand dollars from election officers, two equipment building rentals, recommend be adopted, so receive adopt pass for first reading, counsel.
Thanks, President. Request from our, our city clerk, Brenna did write us a, uh, and he sent us an email and apologizing she couldn't attend. Brenna, you don't have to apologize when you can't attend because a concise and detailed email is all we really need. The election officers, uh, there'll be a little bit of surplus, an anticipated surplus with the reimbursement formula, but, uh, the equipment rentals were a transfer that would pay for the maintenance agreement, the new voting machines, as well as the software used for election day. Uh, Brenna is available for any questions that go beyond what we have in her email, but the committee did accept and, uh, recommend that the transfer be adopted. It's already been approved by the mayor.
Pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
My, it's my turn now? Okay. Uh, motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
A doggy.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, uh, ten B, uh, command and finance, thirty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from capital stabilization to War Memorial, recommend be adopted, receive adopt, pass the first reading, counsel McGivern.
President, the, um, capital stabilization speaks for itself. Uh, one of the good stabilization funds that's been, uh, with that, with the mayor's proposal in the, the condolence of, the condolence, the occurrence of this, this body, uh, it's been used tremendously in the last, uh, last couple of years. Um, this particular request is for the War Memorial project. We had Sean Sheedy with us. Uh, he came in and explained in detail the project from the beginning, but it's the elevator. Uh, the elevator itself is in good shape, but when you, the replacement is part of the, uh, the jack that was part of, of a safety part of the elevator, it's part of the drive, and I'm, I'm just reading my notes because I have no idea how elevators work, but Sean does, which is more important. Uh, we have all the RFQs, we have all the details, we have all the numbers, and Sean shared with us that the bid went out and, and the estimated price was, it was, the lowest bid was over the estimated price. Uh, the bid they accepted, they are happy with the contractor, uh, it's a good contractor, and they, they are happy that the, uh, if, if they get this request approved, that they will be able to go forward and get the elevator fixed and make sure that it is safe, uh, safe soon. Um, after listening to Sean and asking questions, we recommend that the transfer be approved.
So motion, oh, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, very important, uh, uh, item here with the War Memorial, really important. Um, and he, I did ask the question, um, with this improvement there, how long the elevator would last, and he probably said, he said something about thirty to forty years, unless some other big park goes on it, but, um, it's good that we have that, and Sean has done a great job since he's been, uh, involved with the city and, and, and city buildings, so I really want to thank him for that.
As we noted earlier, Mr. President, Counselor Tomlin is going to become involved in Veterans Affairs as he always has been, but he just wants to make sure when he goes to War Memorial building that the elevator's safe when he goes up and down.
I got, I got.
Telling you, I've got, been using the elevator more and more, but, uh, hopefully I'll be all right in, uh, right next year.
All right, so motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approve that one?
Mr. President?
Ooh, yep, okay, yep.
Just a short, short commercial. Um, after Jill spoke, I just had a couple more things I wanted to add on, and it won't be thirty minutes, don't worry, okay, Izzy? Um, I also wanted to thank Brenna, Brenna Murphy McGee for the work she's done with the clerk's office and Kelly and your whole office. Anytime I need anything, um, I went there and she had the answer for me anytime I had a question, yes, she was there, very professional, and the work that she's done, not only serving with her as a, a city official, but since she's taken over, taken over that office, it's really, uh, amazing how the, the, the public has seen that and, and the work they do and how important City Clerk is in our city. And also, I, I, I did start with James Shea and Susan Egan. Um, it was incredible, a lot of knowledge there, the people that it worked with, and as Joe said, uh, he was a book, you know, Jimmy Shea was a book and, uh, really learned a lot from him. Um, and, and working for the council president, Joe, for, uh, probably about twenty of his twenty-six years, uh, and then the work he's done and taught me a lot about city government. Kevin, I took a chance on you, you gave six years, uh, and, uh, I think I was the deciding vote, but I, I did, I did have confidence in you and what you did, um, and I'm really glad that you put the time.
No regrets, I hope.
Yeah. You, you, you really handled the job well, um, those, those years and, uh,
Thank you.
You know, you, you, you kept the meetings in control. And Todd, I, not, I can't say enough, uh, anytime that, uh, we've had our little talks before the meeting or anything, I've had to discuss with you with, uh, anything in, in city politics, you've always been there, and the knowledge that you have, uh, is really something that, uh, the city is gonna miss, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
You were the deciding vote? I always blame Bartley. He voted for you the first time.
Oh, I voted for you.
Just for the record.
Yeah, he did, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It was the green and gold connection over here with Hino Catherine.
I absolutely voted for you, no question.
Hey, Kevin, you know that, uh, Mark Joyce never let me down for that one?
I know.
I'm telling you, but I, I took the heat, I took the heat.
You, you did, you stood tall.
It was, it was a good decision.
Tall man.
Yeah.
That's it.
Uh, go. We gotta write that one down, too. Hold on. All right, so ten C, command and finance, sixty thousand, five hundred from capital stabilization, two.
Yeah, Mr. President, can I, um, table that one, items thirty-two and thirty-four, please?
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and put it with thirty-two and thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Suspend the rules, take up ten C with thirty-two and thirty-four, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two, uh, capital stabilization, fifty-four thousand, two fifty-four, seventy-one, two parking vehicles. Thirty-four, capital stabilization, three thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars, thirty-two cents, two uniforms. Take them all as a package, and you want to vote on that one, Counselor Tomlin? Or you're sending those to finance?
Yeah, I think to be said, but Counselor McGivern will give us.
All right, so Counselor McGivern?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, Counselor Tomlin. Um, this is the, the committee took this issue up twice. Uh, when you look at ten C, uh, the, the original from capital stabilization is, is divided into three different categories, and we have, our first meeting, we had a lot of questions, and quite frankly, we're, we're not, the right people were not there, they, uh, they were invited but just couldn't make it to give us the, uh, the correct answers, and, uh, also, we learned from the correct answers that we, there's some tweaking we can do with the numbers, but not a lot, but, but it kind of makes sense. So the division, uh, we asked the auditor and the mayor to divide the sixty thousand, five hundred into two votes. Uh, one will be about the vehicles and one will be about the, uh, the uniforms, and we can, if, if so, choose, you'll give everybody the option of, uh, voting different on either one. Um, they do go hand in hand, the, what we're looking at are two parking attendants who are responsible for downtown enforcement of, uh, of, uh, of parking ordinances. That includes the parking decks, whether it's by a daily, uh, pay-by-app, or whether it's by monthly parking, that they have the proper stickers and the, that they're properly tagged, and they, they can actually read the car's license plates and know if it's a monthly parker. Uh, they look for illegal parking, both in parking lots such as behind City Hall, uh, besides the parking decks, there's some other outlining parking lots, one down on Handen and High Street, one up by the, uh, um, up by McDonald's, and there's a couple other smaller ones on High Street further, uh, further west. Um, they do a, a tremendous job. We've always had two parking attendants on the books, but we recently have only had one budgeted for, and even that has been vacant at times, but, uh, Carlos came along and now he has a partner. And I, the period of time, I, I, I forget, but the amount of tickets that the two of them wrote was over seven thousand tickets that generated thirty-seven thousand dollars. It's, it's, it's incredible. Um, enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. You know, we have good laws, um, if the laws aren't being enforced, they're, they're useless. And in this case, the message is being sent that if you park illegal in downtown Hoyok, you will, you will receive a ticket. Um, be- besides the revenue that comes from parking tickets, uh, the, the decks and the parking lots, um, are generating revenue. Uh, monthly passes are a little bit different since COVID, there are still a number of people that are working remote and don't need a monthly pass, need more of the option of daily passes when they come in to work in person, and when they're not in person, being able to, uh, work from home, they don't have to be paying for their, uh, parking. Um, a lot of things are changing like that, and, uh, but the, but the revenue is still a steady stream. There's also, um, revenue from the, uh, from, we do it mostly by app, um, but there's also parking meters. Um, unfortunately, we did have the mayor with us, and we did remind him that we hope the parking, and the parking, uh, is parking committee, downtown area parking committee is going to come up with a plan pretty soon to get us back on track a hundred percent. I, I, I don't want to give you an idea, but I think the parking meters that are out of commission are getting close to, uh, forty, forty-five percent of them, which is, which is sad, because they are a revenue producer. So here, here's what the proposal is about. I just wanted to, to point out that parking, uh, what, what we do for parking in downtown Hoyok does produce revenue, and these two gentlemen, uh, two parking attendants do produce, uh, revenue. The request is uniforms was made a lot easier for us, we had a lot of questions in the first meeting and no one to answer. Um, number one, the uniforms are by contract. Each of these people, each of these two gentlemen work for the, uh, DPW, uh, they are under the, uh, the collective bargaining agreement agreed by this, agreed to by this body, by the mayor in this body, and they have a, it's, it's more than a parking allowance, we found out, uh, at least I found out for the first time, but uniforms for the DPW are rented, they don't buy them and give them to individuals. They rent the package, and the package for the individual is also cleaned on a regular basis. Uh, they get, for an allowance, they get a pair of boots, safety boots, which, which does make sense. And the, I think it started with Carlos, when, when they gave him the DPW uniform, and he's going out trying to ticket someone or try to tell someone you're parked illegal, it doesn't work out. It's like, yeah, who are you? You know, you, you pick up trash, you can't tell me I can't park here. So push kind to shove, the, uh, our, our tax collector, who is the parking, uh, um, the parking ticket, uh, hearing officer, and, um, got together with, and the purchasing agent, you know, we got together with the, uh, with the DPW, the union and everybody, and went out and, and were able to, uh, put together a package of a uniform that shows everybody that these are parking attendants. Uh, again, they're not gonna be given these, so if there's a change in, in personnel, it's just a simple change of, it continues to be rented and the person doesn't get to keep the, uh, the uniform itself. So we, we went through that, um, checked with the, with the law department that was with us and checked with everything, and it is con- excuse me, it is contractual, and we do recommend that we, with the replacement order, that we do adopt that and allow the uniforms to, uh, uh, be rented and allow these two gentlemen to have uniforms. Then we looked at the two vehicles that are being proposed, which we did have a lot of questions at the first meeting, and, uh, we, we learned a lot, a lot more with, uh, the purchasing agent being with us and with our tax collector being with us. Um, these two vehicles, I, I think everybody got the package, but they're, uh, they're utility vehicles for the best way to describe them, and, and the purpose is not just for getting them, uh, part of it is for getting them around a very large area of what they're responsible for, for, to, to enforce the parking ordinances, because people try to beat downtown parking if they work here by parking at the first set of, uh, open spaces that don't have meters, or parking illegal, or, or parking in places where, where they shouldn't be. So these, these, uh, they're called Kubadas, Kubados, and they, they are two vehicles, uh, they, they, they're designed not just for transportation and for easy parking for, to do their duties, but one of the duties is the collection of the coins out of the meters, which is, there is a safety box which has been used, which is also a checks and balance, because they don't just open up the meters and take the money out, it goes into the box, and then, and the check-off is, if it's done properly, is, you know, the individual meters, um, have a tally, digital tally, and, and someone has to check and, and randomly audit and make sure that the amount, same amount of money comes back into the, uh, into the treasury, into the city. So this vehicle has a double feature where, once they fill the box, they can put it inside the cab, there's a special, uh, location in there where they can lock it up and it's secure until they get it back to, uh, back to City Hall or back to the bank, whichever one they do on, on a given day. So the vehicle is, is number of different, you know, it's, it's, it enhances the efficiency of, of their duties by allowing them to get to places to, and to enforce, uh, different of, of their duties by allowing them to get to places to, to enforce different things. It gets them around, it looks a lot better. They currently share a hand-me-down Crown, Crown Vic. I jokingly said I, I got to drive a Crown Vic to Boston once. I think it was Denny Egan's old car. You, you touched the gas and you were two towns over. You don't need parking attendants driving a Crown Vic. And, and it, there's no safety features and, and there's nowhere, nowhere easy way to park it when you have to get out and check, you know, check something and enforce a ticket. So we asked a lot of questions. We talked a lot about the questions that weren't answered at the first meeting and we came up with, with numbers that made a lot of sense. If we get, the parking committee gets us back up to a hundred percent, we're looking at the revenue coming in from the decks, the tickets, the meters, paying for this easily. And it makes, it makes sense. The uniforms is contractual and we'd have to make up an argument not to honor the contract. The, the vehicles we weren't comfortable with, I for one feel much more comfortable with this request. And Counselor Tomlin, I'll let him, you know, address his, his point because he made a very good point about what if something happens and what happens to these vehicles. The third part is kind of a no-brainer. They need communications that is both reliable and, and, and safe, safely designed to, to, it's a two-channel radio that allows them to communicate with theirselves, allows them to communicate with the foreman or the DPW, but also there's other, another channel that allows them to complete, compete on a, a talk to, you know, immediately connect to the police department if there, if there's an urgency to, to get a, to get a backup with the police department. So the committee ended up recommending four zero. We asked for the money to be separated, but we ended up recommending four zero to vote for these two transfers that are coming in this evening.
Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. I think, so I wasn't able to attend that meeting and I think there's, there's, there's a couple question, not a question, but like, one of the things that I kind of wanted to point out that like, with regards to building this out and investing from funding into this is that like, I feel like we have an opportunity to kind of get to the drawing board and, and maybe, how do you say it, mend or merge together certain things that are happening simultaneously at the same time. So one of the things I, I, I know that we've been pushing for, some of us, is a traffic squad, right, in general, right, and, and for the police department. And at the same time, as Counselor McGivern mentioned, these two people ticketing up and down High Street are already generating the revenue that a said traffic squad could possibly generate. So for me, I, I would love, and maybe I'll file an order in the new year, to see how we could possibly combine the, the ticketing people that are doing this, the work on High Street, under the police department traffic squad guise, and work with the, what are they called, the reserve police officers, to be a part of that whole traffic squad piece and try to build it out from there, whereas the uniforms won't have to necessarily come and wouldn't be an issue because police get the uniforms, it's already in their thing. They get bullets, they get everything already. So ultimately, that would not be a concern for us because it's already in their budget. And at the same time, it will then generate revenue. And when it comes to vehicles, some of the vehicles, the police kind of have access to vehicles already. We won't necessarily have to purchase new ones. We could try to like, again, this is something that, it would be something that we map out and if we strategically plan it, we can save money and generate income at the same time. So it's cool to hear all this now, but I just hope that in the future, we would strategically think about doing something like this because it would make money for us and save us money both across the board. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Counselor Rivera, I think it certainly is worth, worth discussion. It's, it's a good idea and understand. It, it does enter into the gray area of at some point where we have to back off because it becomes collective bargaining. And you have to get the, we can't, the mayor has to get the police union to accept that type of thinking. And, but I think if, if you propose that idea next year, a good way to approach it is to propose it through the mayor. If you get the mayor on board, then he might be able to take the next steps and get the unions on board. They, they're not police officers and, and I think you understand that, but.
But not out of the reserve.
I don't think we want them to be police officers.
Auxiliary, yeah, like the auxiliary are not actually police officers yet either.
No, no.
No, I know that, but one of the guys is auxiliary already.
Alright, one at a time, one at a time.
So like, is this friendly?
That's how we're building, we're building, we're building. This guy wondered if it's friendly or not.
No, but I got you.
It gets unfriendly.
Now, the reason why for me it came with the, the auxiliary is because they already have that. And, and when I see them both walking together, I'll be honest with you, the guy that's been doing it, he was my neighbor in the building that I grew up in the flats when I was a little kid and I see him doing it and I give him a hundred ten percent credit because that's the job that everybody hates. Everybody hates that guy. You know what I'm saying? And he's the right guy to do it because he'll do it, he'll give you the ticket and he'll smile at you as he gives it to you. You know what I mean? It's not a problem to him. But now I'm glad to see that he has, he gave me three. So it's alright and he was my neighbor. But ultimately, I, I'm glad to see him with the auxiliary guy, right, where he's paired with someone and it's a safety feature with regards to him because he gets chewed out all the time. So like, I think having that police back, backing under the guise of police, not DPW and then calling police, it's a different context. But I hear you and I, and I just put it out there just to put it out there. Thank you.
I, I appreciate it. I just wanted to bring up the collective bargaining and, and hopefully you can make some hay, you know, with the, with the mayor and maybe some, you can get something going with collective bargaining. I, I just want to know Counselor Rivera and everybody listening now, if you would come to the meeting, our meeting tonight would be a little bit, we would have talked about that in the meeting and we would already reported that and tonight's meeting wouldn't be as long.
Oh, I know, I got, I got a lot going on.
He's got a lot.
Full-time work.
Counselor Jordan.
Okay. I was under the impression this was going back to finance for further discussion, but.
Ten, ten C is, that's what it says.
Ten, ten C is going back?
That's what, that's the recommendation.
What?
They also, well, ten C is referred back to.
Oh, we took that all up as a package.
I'm, so no, we took up ten C, thirty-two and thirty-four as a package.
Yes.
I thought it was going to be referred back.
No, no, we're replacing ten C with thirty-two and thirty-four. We, we've had our two meetings with, it's the same issue, it's just dividing the money as I, as I stated.
Alright, Counselor Jordan.
Counselor Jordan had a, a, a family commitment and he wasn't at the second committee meeting, so I, I, I can, I just wanted to point that out. I wasn't trying to. I, I was able to get the additional information, however, and two bad ideas, merged to one or merged into two is still unfortunately two bad ideas. I will say, the only thing I've heard so far that they've made the business case for is the radios, but unfortunately, they're merged in with the two vehicles. Sorry to say that I will most definitely be voting against these. One is, let's just clarify a couple points. One, the contract does not require us to spend two thousand dollars an employee on uniforms, especially to rent uniforms, you're not even purchasing them. So that's point number one. There's no requirement whatsoever, so we need to be clear on that point. Like, we're somehow legally obligated to vote for thirty-eight sixty-six in uniforms. That's not true. There's, they're supposed to be given uniforms. There's no requirement that this is the arrangement or this is the cost. So I think that would, that should be looked into further. And one more reason, I think we should go back to finance with it. Just imagine, just use your own common sense here that you're gonna, a parking person should be given a uniform without question, a hat, a jacket, a shirt, a pair of pants, a nice pair of shoes perhaps. Okay, and maybe, how about this, let's give them all two sets, alright? We now have to wash their uniforms and we have to give them like somewhere between five and eleven sets of uniforms? This is preposterous. And for, for a department on this area that hasn't really had anything in terms of uniforms for this particular position, I no doubt think that they should have decent uniforms. That does not cost two thousand dollars an employee for a uniform they don't even get to keep. Alright? And as far as, we're worried about if people leave, well, that's fine. We buy everybody two sets of uniforms and if they leave, they leave. And we come in, whoever the next person is, and we buy them two sets of uniforms. I assure you, you can get two sets of uniforms for a lot less than two thousand dollars. I don't know where we're shopping, but where I go to buy clothes, I'm paying a lot less than two thou- a thousand dollars an outfit. Alright? How much does the average Holyoker you think spend on a, on a, on a, on a set of clothes? You think they're spending, after about the tax bill they're gonna get in two weeks, they sure as hell aren't gonna be spending a thousand dollars an outfit. Alright, but hey, in Holyoke, the broke city, we're gonna now start outfitting people at a thousand dollars an outfit and that's like, no problem, nothing to see here. We're just gonna sail that right through the city council. Don't think so, not with my vote. This is an abomination. This should no way in hell be passed. This is ridiculous of an epic proportion. Point number two, the other one about vehicles. Everything Counselor Rivera just said is a hundred percent right, but let me tell you something else. Not only is what he said right, we should start doing it now. Now, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents later, we should start doing exactly what you said right now, tonight. And that is that we're going to figure out what we're gonna do about, just imagine, now listen to the logic of this. We have a perfectly fine working vehicle and if they don't like that car, the police are constantly cycling through vehicles. You don't like this car, no problem. Give it another year, we'll give you another car, right? But no, we're actually contemplating that we're not only gonna buy one car, we're gonna buy two cars just for the parking people to ride around at twenty-five thousand, I think it is, or twenty-six thousand dollars a vehicle. We've got that kind of money laying around? This, this is, this is how we're good, but it's literally falling out of our pockets. If we've got money for this, we literally have money for everything. This is what I'm talking about when I say fiscal discipline. Good grief, can't we say no to this kind of, these are nice to have, not must haves, these are nice to have, where if you've got just money falling out of your pockets in city government, then you start going around and buying the parking guys, new vehicles to ride around and pick up the coin boxes versus the car that they have now, which is a perfectly fine car, okay? And it can pick up the coin boxes just fine. And maybe the answer is we coordinate with the police and they pick, they take it out and they hand it and then they hand it to this person. We should review the procedures. It cannot be the answer in government as soon as we, as soon as we're looking at next fiscal year, two to three million dollar shortfall in the budget and we're out buying now fifty-four thousand dollars worth of cars. You know, I, I heard, yes, I'm okay with the radios, they want to bring in a third item, I'll probably vote for the radios, that's not a problem. Although, I will say, for seemingly unknown reasons, these employees have been operating off their cell phones for decades and that seemingly has worked fine, but now we have to have, everybody needs an eighteen hundred dollar radio because we can't, would it be cheaper to give a twenty dollar cellphone credit? I mean, literally, how many calls are they actually making? Oh my God, I'm being attacked by whoever. Call on the cellphone to the police, just like I would do if somebody was attacking me, okay? How many of these things are actually happening? And really, you know, the answer in government here is spend another two grand for this and drop another two grand for that. This is, no. This is silly. This is extra, this is nice to have, it is not a must-have. And we're in a must-have government right now. And the must-have government is, you've got a perfectly fine working car, we're gonna give you a couple uniforms and maybe we give you twenty bucks a month for your cellphone allowance. That works for me. Maybe we, if we really feel like we're in the holiday spirit, give them the eighteen hundred dollar radio, I guess, if it's, if it's an absolute, but give me a break. And I suppose then you gotta have somebody to tune up the radio and then we're gonna have somebody to, you know, get on the radio plan and that'll be another thirty dollars a month. I, I can only imagine what that is all's entailed. Stop spending nice-to-have money. Spend must-have money. That's what the council's job to do because in about six months, you're gonna be wishing you had this sixty thousand dollars back. Thank you.
So just for clarification, ten C was referred back to the council. What do you want to do with that, Counselor McGivern, ten C?
Uh, ten C, we will return to the, excuse me, ten C returned to the auditor.
Alright, so let's go in order and try and get on track here. So ten C, this motion is referred back to the auditor, all those in favor? I oppose. Alright, so now you had thirty-two and thirty-four taken up.
We can take them up separate, but a motion will pass the first reading?
Alright, so thirty-two will go first. Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, that's the fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Any further discussion? Counselor McGivern.
I just, under discussion, I would be more comfortable voting on any spending orders of this sort if we, A, had our books closed, B, knew what our free cash was. Every other community around us knew what their free cash was before they set the tax rate. We've already set our tax rate somewhat blind because we don't know what our free cash is. And to the points made by the previous speaker relative to the budget considerations we have to make next year, what that free cash is, is going to be a very critical number for us to know in terms of finishing out this year. So I wish this would go back to committee so that once we actually know what our financial house is and looks like, then we could take it up again. I'm not against uniforms, maybe the radios, the vehicles. I'd like to see our departments sharing the vehicles if they can. The police already do share the cars, maybe they could share that others, I forget the name of it, that I understand they have some. But that's just my view on it. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I, I, and I did watch the whole hour-long plus discussion on finance, so it was, and it was a darn good discussion too. Really detailed and I learned quite a bit. I would just say that in capital stabilization, I don't think it's really gonna impact the overall budget because it's coming from a stabilization council. The tax rate part, I'm not super concerned about that. What I would be concerned about is, you know, why two vehicles? Why we have to have eleven uniforms? The, the quantity seems to be a little bit out of whack. I would also say potentially the funding source, if, if they're generating revenue, why don't we consider the revenue collected from the parking and the enforcement as opposed to capital stabilization? I, I, I get it, I, I, it makes sense in some regard. So I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for this tonight, but if it, if it passes, I'm not gonna be sad. But if it doesn't pass, I would still be warm to some version of it and further discussion and, and a further discussion about the funding source. So, and if it doesn't pass, I wouldn't want it tabled here. I would rather just motion reconsider and send it back to finance. So I, I'm gonna vote no on this, but, but only because of what I just said. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
So for me, it, my, my concerns are kind of similar to Counselor Bartley's, but I'm gonna vote yes, just because I know for a fact that in other departments, we voted yes for some significant increases for some of the same things. A lot of it has to do with uniforms and equipment. I remember for police, we voted for them to get bullets for, for, for the, for, for their training and all this stuff. It's, it's no different to me with regards to departments. So this is a department trying to get what other departments have been getting over time. I just don't agree with how things are being structured because I don't feel like it's gonna be effective or efficient in the long term. But for now, I'll vote yes and hopefully we get things together and we can strategically plan how we make this more effective and efficient for the city overall. And that way, we're not spending more money on these kind of items and actually doing it out of revenue that's being created. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm gonna vote yes, simply because everything that I heard during the finance meeting made sense to me. It's, it's gonna be paid for in the long run and the way I look at it, if I hire people to do, perform a job, then I need to provide those tools for them to do their job effectively. And I think this is a, a good turn for Holyoke and how we manage parking in the city. I think this is great. And if I remember correctly, the vehicles are multipurpose. They will be shared with the fire department and if I also remember correctly, it will be stored in the fire department. So these, these two vehicles make sense as well because if one breaks down, you have your backup. But these vehicles are designed to fit in spaces that normal cars won't go into or can't go into, right? So that's, there's that. And then with a Crown Vic, when you take, when you're, when you are picking up the coins from, from the, the, what you call them, when you're picking them up, they have, it's a secure locked box that comes with that vehicle. So you securely walk it from one location to the next. So for me, it's a yes, it makes sense and it'll definitely pay itself off. And I, and I respect and understand the concerns that counselors before me spoke on. I, I completely respect that. Thanks.
Counselor McGivern.
We're about to enter into January and February, two of the coldest and unpredictable weather months of the seasons that we have as New Englanders. We're New Englanders, four seasons. The uniforms aren't one set of uniforms for every season. The summers are hot and humid, February, January can be freezing below zero winds. They work outdoors. They work outdoors. The uniform is something we voted upon as a contractual agreement when we adopted the collective bargaining with the DPW. They're part of the union. I'm not saying I agree a hundred percent with the rental formula or the concept of renting the uniforms, they're renting the uniforms. They're not giving them eleven uniforms every, every day, every week. They have the ability to be able to outfit them according to the weather changes as, as time goes on. The safety of these individuals should be foremost. The safety of these individuals should be foremost in everyone sitting here's mind. We can't just clap when department heads walk in. We can't just say all our employees are doing a great job. We need to back up what we say to protect our employees. The radios, the, the quick, using a, a secure channel to get to the police station is a far lot better than, than using your cellphone to call nine-one-one and hope you get a response by the Holyoke Police Department and not the state police. You need a direct line to the dispatcher to get the quickest cruiser when there's a knife or gun in your face. It may not happen, but what if it did? They're insulted on a daily basis. They have a thankless job. They're generating revenue as part of their job. They're picking up that lockbox. And they, they, they were walking that lockbox, you know, one day with a, you know, with a, with a two wheeler up and down Dwight Street. You know, I glanced over and said, what, what, what kind of city are we? Anybody driving by would just say, I mean, that, that's a crime and, you know, just being asked to happen. This is not spending money and, and just for the sake of spending money. This is protecting two individuals that do something very few people wanna do. It's designing a different uniform that shows what their job is. There's a little expense there upfront. I get that. The rental, I'm not trying, it, it is what it is. But we voted on the contract, we have to honor the contract. The vehicles, I think it's all been said, they're all-purpose utilities. If the need for the vehicles or parking tenants went away, if we transferred the whole thing, the, the police department doesn't want this. We don't even have a traffic bureau right now. They didn't want it when we had a traffic bureau. They don't wanna, you know, they'll do tickets, but they're, they don't wanna be out there, you know, five days a week. You know, Monday through Friday, when, when, when downtown is open and thriving. They don't wanna be confined into one area doing parking tickets. Police department's not gonna collect money out of the meters. Alright? This is the right thing to do at the right time.
So, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a technical question, um, on thirty-four. So when I was at finance, I understood that the reason we separated it was that the cars were coming out of stabilization. And I thought the uniforms were supposed to come out of the operational budget, and that's why they were broken out, so that they wouldn't be coming out of stabilization.
Counselor McGivern.
I, I can answer that. Um, we, we talked about should uniforms come out of stabilization? We didn't get a straight answer as to what the mayor wanted to do. Uh, the separation that I asked for was, and I knew Counselor Jordan's from the first meeting, what his concerns were. And I, I didn't wanna assume, Kevin, but I, I figured they'd be just pretty near the same, you know? And you elevated them a little bit, alright?
Yeah.
But at the same time, the, the separation was so that we would be able to vote on each category separate. If, you know, if you're, you know, you, you understand you're in favor of the uniforms, maybe because they're contractual, maybe because of what I just said, or for whatever reason. But you're not in favor of the vehicles. So you can take one vote on one and a no vote on the other.
Right.
Can, can capital stabilization be used? Yes. Capital stabilization is one-time capital outweigh type things.
I understand what the fund is, but, uh, my understanding of how it was gonna be transferred was different. That's all. Thank you.
So motion is, oh, there, oh, Counselor Thomas, sorry.
I think you forgot me, but that's okay.
It's, it's.
I'm just a minor member of this.
Back and forth, back and forth.
I'm just a minor member of that committee. Um, that's.
You're just someone they used to know.
Someone that tries to correct you every now and then, right? No, I, uh, I, I understand Counselor Bacon, Counselor Jordan, you spoke very well about this, you know, and I had my concerns. I really did, until I heard the tax collector say how much money that they bring in every, not just in tickets, but in the, in, in the, you know, out in the machines and the parking decks. One number she said was like seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, I understand about uniforms. You know, these guys were wearing DPW, I believe, uniforms. And so you're going up to give somebody a ticket and, uh, you know, DPW says DPW on it in the pants and the boots. I think we have to, you know, really dress these employees in the proper, proper way. So they know, the people in the public know that they're parking, you know, officers. Equipment, I had concerns too, uh, Counselor Jordan, the two vehicles, why do they need two? The purchasing director really explained that, that these two vehicles can go to two different parts of the city and collect double if they're doing a one vehicle on a Crown Vic, and they're trying to get some of these vehicles done. And a Crown Vic that isn't probably working too well. They can go one part of the city and the other one can go in the other part of the city and collect a revenue. Um, the, anytime you have a job, the equipment and the dressing of that person in that job, the employees, anybody of us knows, if you're a nurse, if you're a doctor, if you're a letter carrier, if you're, you know, a lawyer, the way you dress is important. And you gotta have the right equipment. If you're doing a job, uh, we, how many times do we get vehicles for the DPW? How many times do we buy a fire truck that's six hundred thousand dollars and they pull it out in front here and show us how much that vehicle costs? They need the right equipment to do the proper job. When she said that these guys are going up with the blue bin, recycling bin up Dwight Street with the money in there, I believe that's what she said, in a two wheeler, how safe is that? I mean, I, I just, you know, I understand the money thing. I, I think as Counselor Bartley said something, it's, it's capital stabilization. It's for capital improvements in our, in our community. The vehicles are capital improvements. Purchasing director said if, if, if the fire department, the police department, the parks and rec might need one of these vehicles, a Kubota's. Milit, uh, uh, Counselor Puelo, you know, the military uses these vehicles. It's important, the safety of these. Taking that lockbox and putting it in there and locking it, you, you know, it could be three, four thousand dollars that's locked up. You're gonna put it in the backseat of a Crown Vic, or you're gonna push the vehicles up, the, the, the coins or whatever you're collecting in a two wheeler in, in a, in a blue box or a blue bin? And that's what they were doing. I, I believe it. And I know we had a parking director before, parking worker, and, and I know he's, he worked without a vehicle. He probably worked without the uniforms. You know, he probably worked without the, the fancy things that we're trying to look for. And I know you said it's, it's, it's a wannabe. I think this is a must have. I really do believe this is a must have. That's my opinion. I really respect your, your opinion and what you're saying, looking after the budget, you know? Uh, and, and I, I know you, you and, and, and several of our colleagues have to look at the budget, you know? And I know I'm not gonna be here next year, and I'm not doing this because I'm not gonna be here and I don't care what's gonna happen with the city. I just think it's important that we clothe these people, these employees in the right way. And I think it's important that they get the right equipment and the right vehicles. Um, the radios, we wanted to separate that out. The money, the radios go with the vehicles. So those two radios, and I, I understand that they're costly. But what is the cost of safety of these individuals? Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Right. Um, you would almost think, again, first of all, I don't wanna question the motives of anybody. Everybody here is wonderful and everybody, I appreciate and respect everybody's opinion. So, um, again, I don't have a monopoly on, on great ideas over in this corner of the room. I'll only suggest my, my perspective on things. Um, you would almost think though, by listening to the dialogue, that, you know, we were just creating a parking program um, in the meter system downtown, that as if this didn't exist already for a couple of decades. How on earth did we manage for all these decades without, you know, everybody having their own personal vehicle? And two thousand dollar, uh, uniforms, uh, with eleven uniforms? I mean, you actually have the least amount of meters we've ever had at this point. If we went back in a time machine to when we started this whole program, my question is, I would like to see how the business case for these quote unquote improvements of this, these vehicles. It, it seems to me you actually have the fewer meters to even go to. So, I think that I've been, was told something on the order of fifty percent of the meters are unoperational. Why don't we put capital on that? Okay? We had one parking person for years and years and years, and somehow we managed. And somehow they managed to, with the vehicle we provided them, to collect the money. And they didn't have a two thousand dollar uniform. We managed. And yet now it's, hey, nothing to see here. We got all the money in the world. I don't even know, I wonder, I'm gonna have to call Long Meadow and find out if they even have this type of, you know, uh, two thousand dollar parking meter, uh, clothing allowance with their own personal vehicle. You know, I, I, I really wonder. I'm gonna have to check into some of these really affluent communities to even see if they're gonna be hanging with Holyoke on this type of a program. But I, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, it seems like we're collecting fewer meters and just doling it out, uh, here on this. I mean, we can justify anything. People deserve to have a uniform, says parking person on it or whatever, official, and have a couple of the uniforms. And we already provided you a car. If we had, if we were flush with all kinds of money, I mean, it's just like we can't save on anything. Everything is justified. When you're down at this level, this is the family vacation on the credit card, and I don't know when I can pay it off. That's what we're at now. So, my perspective, again, respect all perspectives, my perspective. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as glamorous as these vehicles and uniforms sound, um, I don't think they are. And I don't think that saying that we manage just fine is totally accurate since about forty percent of our meters don't work. So, when I see, um, something like this where we can have the opportunity to create a more professional, um, parking unit that can get around the city and can probably get two meters to fix them and empty them. Um, if they're able to pull in seventy-two grand with nothing, imagine what they can do with the proper tools. So, I will vote for this, but it's because I do believe that, um, holy, and holy, we've, many of our departments have struggled to do the best with the bare minimum, and they have done what they can. But if we were able to give people the tools they need, we'll see that they'll do much better for the city. And they'll be, you know, more efficient and more effective. And that's, in all departments, we see how upgrading our departments, software's, equipment, has been helping the city, and I don't think this is any different. So, thank you.
Counselor Puelo, then Bacon, and then Rivera.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I, I just wanna footstomp, uh, the, the point, and I agree with everything that's been said. I'm not gonna vote for this. But I, I do just wanna add that I think that, you know, what, vehicles being absent and us saying that people are walking around with recycling bins, I think that's a terrible thing. But I, I think that that's, that's a failure on leadership. That's a failure on, and not people in this room. I think that you can figure this out. People that work here full-time should be able to figure it out. I mean, the mayor's had three cars in the last, what, two years? I mean, some, nobody can give these guys a ride or figure out some kind of way for a lot less money to get these guys from point A to point B. I think that's a terrible thing. And the same thing with the radios. Like, I just don't think that somebody needs police-grade, military-grade radios. I think if we're thinking of somebody's safety, again, like, leadership should be able to figure out a strategy where you either have a cruiser patrolling around, or you have people that are driving or communicating. I mean, you should be able to have a direct line to a police officer if you're a city employee and you're doing this type of job. So, I just wanna footstop that, you know, just to, thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm also trying to look at this, um, from a longer-term perspective. The other concept that was discussed that is becoming popular almost everywhere around us is cashless systems for everything. If you go to Springfield, you go to Northampton, you're not putting a coin in anything. You're using an app, you're using something else. So, we're staffing and buying vehicles for a system that is not going to be any longer in place. And for the folks that are new, I would just say, we've been talking about fixing the meters, I wanna say going on ten years now. And, and so I think when we first started talking about it, fifty percent of them were broken. Fast forward ten years, fifty percent of them are still broken. We've had study committees, we've had mayor's initiatives. But I really do think this time, the matter will be addressed, but it will end up being addressed in a cashless system. Because our, um, machines in the parking garages are broken a lot. Also, anything with money in it is getting broken. So, I think we just wanna be more forward-looking and ask our departments to share till we can get to the new evolution if we can. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
Thank you. Um, uh, for me, a lot of this is kinda like, ah, I don't, I don't get migraines, but I think this is what it would feel like. Because it kinda feels like, it's like, so we were just, I think Counselor McGivern mentioned something about a revenue that we brought in, right? If we're saying that a lot of this stuff, this is not new, right? That this revenue has been brought in for over ten years. What have we been doing with the revenue is the first question, that we are not able to fix the meters over the last ten years with the same revenue that we're taking out of the meters? So that's a problem, right? That's the first piece. That's a problem. And this is the thing that goes down, trickles down throughout the department, right? It's a failure on leadership, not just the mayor that just came in, but everyone that's been a part of this system for the last fifteen years. So, no one's called it out, no one spoke on it. You could say that you have. It's my turn. It's my turn, right? We, we could say that we have, but it's been time, right? There, there are things that we have seen effort and energy get put into, even lawsuits come out of, for certain things that you want. So if you really wanted this to happen, it could have happened a long time ago. That's the piece, right? So now, I, I will take the time to sit down with the mayor and hopefully try to map something out that strategically works effectively and efficient for the city overall. Then the second piece I wanted to add, I never got a ticket on High Street until these new guys came up. Just so you guys know. So you guys are talking about forever it's been around? I'm sorry, but I actually, matter of fact, I will file an order so that we can bring in the revenue for the last ten years so we could see how much revenue was in the time when we actually had a hundred percent meters. Because I'm gonna tell you the truth, I bet you were probably collecting a little more now than we were then. That's just the reality of what it is. There was no app system then, so, and I honestly don't even know who the guy was back then. I don't even know who it is. That, no disrespect to the person, but like, this, I've gotten four tickets this year alone. And I've had to pay them. No problem, right? I pay them, I put it in. It's not a problem. I don't care. At the end, I'm still talking, bro. Relax. That's all I'm saying. So, where it comes down to it is, as a body, can we come together and actually work on something that works and become effective and efficient finally moving forward? Because at the end of the day, it feels like we're talking in circles, and some of you have been talking in circles for more than ten years. So, please, can we get something done? Laugh all you want, but I'm laughing because I've only been here two years, and we're in, and we're in flux, bro.
Alright, hold on, hold on. So Counselor McGivern was next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that I did hear, um, we do have a contractual obligation to buy uniforms. Um, and also, um, that even a cashless system will require enforcement. And as we know, Holyoke has had plenty of enforcement issues. And again, I think the equipment that we purchased for this department will help them successfully enforce our parking laws. Thanks.
So, Counselor McGivern.
Spread the rules to allow Counselor McGivern to speak for the third time.
Second.
Some people tonight speaking four and five times without suspension.
No, no, I've tracked it.
Per issue, Joe.
I've tracked it. Counselor McGivern.
Um, thank you. Um, Counselor McGivern just said it. I mean, we, we are, the city has been going towards a cashless, uh, system. And, and be honest with you, back when it was not a cash, and I'm, I'm an advocate of the cash, cashless system. Back when it wasn't, we had two attendants, one in Suffolk Street, one over on, uh, on Dwight Street, Yorni Prue Garage. And they collected the daily parkers' money as they left the parking deck itself. And we had two attendants walking, uh, almost as big of, of a, uh, an area as they are now. The revenue, and this is over a five-year period, was coming in at a hundred and forty-five thousand, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year, including parking tickets, including monthly passes, including daily, um, passes and the meters, which were in much better, better shape. We did, and the city has done, and, and I think they're still looking at it, out here on High Street, a meter that, that could be cashless, a, a zone that could be cashless. And you could, you just use your app and, uh, and as you, uh, as you go, you pay. Um, a nice feature to that is when you put money in a meter and, and it's still ticking when you drive away, someone can just get free parking. When you do it cashless, you drive away, shh, starts over, and the next person has to go to their app. So the, the city is moving to that, but it's like Counselor McGivern said, whether you're cashless or, or you're putting coins in somewhere, somebody's gotta enforce it to make it work and to make it honest for everybody. Um, you know, Counselor Rivera, you know, you know, jokes, the, the person, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus, but you know, some of the prior parking attendants. some of the prior parking attendants, you know, weren't known for, for giving out tickets. Matter of fact, the super, former superintendent of DPW actually put them on a quota system like the state police are on, saying, you need to write so many tickets, you know, and, and watched them daily, weekly to see if they were writing tickets. One of the biggest abusers are the shop owners. They want to park, and their employees sometimes, in front of the place they work in. That's the two-hour parking by meter or by design that we want turnover so people come downtown to spend money, so people occupy storefronts, so at the same time, we get more property taxes because the buildings become more valuable. We have more jobs, and that's the way it all works together. Down the road, do we need to change all this? That's why we have a study committee going, you know? But there have been changes made. We're going in the right direction. But to get through the next five years and get as much revenue out of this as possible, we need, I believe we should pass this transfer this evening and allow this to go forward. The revenue collected, like most revenue, it's not in a revolving fund. It goes back in the general fund. One of the depth services is the Suffolk Street Deck opened in nineteen seventy-nine. We, not everybody was in agreement with this, but we rebuilt the deck as opposed to tearing it down because we hope the future says we're gonna have a lack of parking problem and not too much parking. But the revenue is used, it offsets the depth that the city owes on renovation of both decks. The Ernie Prue Deck needed some work, not as much as Suffolk Street, but we did, probably about five, six years ago, we did that. So it's, I, I'm, I'm done, Mr. President. I, the future is the future, and I, I hope the city figured this out because, not just to make money, but to make this a more viable downtown where people will come with respect to parking, not park like some people and get three tickets in one month.
One day.
Oh, one year. And more restaurants, more retail shops, more offices. You know, we, we will see open, more jobs, more tax, tax dollars offsetting and, and, and helping our tax levy. And it's all part of the big scheme. We're not quite there yet. I agree with Counsel Bacon, but this helps us get through a gap over the next maybe five to ten years. And it makes sense to me.
All right, so item thirty-two is the fifty-four thousand, two fifty-four, seventy-one. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Calhoun, yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bacon?
No. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Nine yeas, four nays.
Your vote, your approval on thirty-four was three thousand eight hundred sixty-six thousand, thirty-two cents for capital simulation of uniforms. Motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Just briefly under discussion.
Yep.
I did want to point out, since the topic of the Suffolk Street Parking Garage came up, I wish that there has been a post-game analysis study of that decision to add millions and millions and millions in cost to add the second level of that garage versus having a one level. And did we ever actually get the revenue for that back? I hope that's examined in that study, because I think we're gonna find out it wasn't. And, and then the other, the other thing is about these vehicles, which is now just passed, is if we're going to a cashless system and there is no cash to collect, isn't that what I listened to as the argument for the vehicles? But again, a lot of things are said about downtown parking. Just history just proves it just doesn't turn out to be true. And I'm glad that the Suffolk Street Parking Garage is a good example of that. We, we basically spent millions and millions on spaces that nobody parks in. And that's just a fact. Okay? So gee, how do we ever save money around here? It's impossible. You're gonna cut this and cut. It's just, I've watched Hoyoke Government over the decades waste so much money. And, you know, end of speech. Thank you.
So Counsel.
We, we didn't rebuild the second deck or build the second deck for the Suffolk Street. We saved the second deck with the same steel girders, reinforcing the same steel girders and redoing the deck itself that was falling apart and making it safe and making it durable for the next twenty, thirty years. I'm optimistic. I'm optimistic that maybe someday the Victory Theater is gonna be open. I'm optimistic that we're gonna see bigger things downtown as malls are starting to fall off what, what they, what they were. And maybe retail will come back to downtown. There's a lot of good things that are in the future. And the, as I stated earlier, COVID changes some of the numbers, not an excuse, but there's more people working remote, but that's changing quickly too because hybrid doesn't work well, Mr. President. You can't run the meeting when you're on your phone, you know, and I have to break your gavel. The vehicles are utility vehicles. In five years, seven years, eight years from now, we don't need them for parking enforcement or we don't need one of them. It's like was said earlier, there are other departments that can use them. They're very durable. They're very all-purpose. And they, they will be available to be used somewhere. To my, it should always be in use, but that's just my thoughts.
All right, so on thirty-four, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk of Calhoun, yes, you're voting for the three thousand.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
Your vote, your approval of that one, that's the end of finance.
Gee, good job, Chairman. It's all over, all over.
It's all over.
Before I move on, I was given this. The City of Hoyoke will host the Observation for Kwanzaa on Thursday, December twenty-eighth, at one PM here at City Hall. It will be open to the public and refreshments will be served and the mayor will be given a proclamation. So the twenty-eighth at one PM, City Hall.
Do you want to mention the inauguration plans too for, I think it's January second, those details? Have those been made public yet or not? I know, I know you, oh, okay. Okay, very.
We can wait till tomorrow.
If it's open to the public, can we all come down just to watch?
We'll be fine. Mr. President, just motion to suspend rules and take twelve A, B, and C together.
A, B, and C as a package. So taking twelve A, B, C as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So public service, City Council signs support the attached resolution for the Puerto Rican Culture District, recommended, adopted as amended. B is public service referred. An order of the mayor, letter of appointing for the library board, confirm. And then twelve C is the Community Preservation Committee, confirm. That would be Jason Ferrera. The other one was Brennan Levitin. So all those are to confirm or adopt as amended under discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, on the, the resolution, I think everybody got the copy. Thank you, Counsel Bartley, for putting that forward. On Article Three, it says, "We'll appoint a city official to represent the city within a district partnership of said cultural district through appointment by the mayor with the approval of the city council." So that gives the, you know, the city council a vote on that, which was important. I'd like to thank Counsel Murphy Rumbaletti, Mark Maldonado Velez, Izzy Rivera, and Jenny Rivera for bringing that forward. I hope that we can pass this tonight and really want to thank the work you did for putting that together.
So on nine A, a motion is receive, adopt the resolution as amended.
Twelve A.
Well, you need.
Twelve A.
Not nine A.
Adopted. So, a roll call, so what was that?
Oh, do we need, we need a roll call? I'm sorry.
Well, yeah.
Roll call on the resolution.
Yeah. So Clerk of Calhoun, yes, you're voting for it.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approval of that. B and C were confirming appointments. Counsel Toman.
Yeah, for item number B, Brenna Levitin, forty-eight Vernace Street, a good resident of Ward Two down here in Hoyoke. She came, she was on Zoom. She's got great experience. Actually, she's on the Board of Trustees of Wilbraham Public Library. She was a University of Illinois Ibrana Library and Information Science with a GPA of four point oh oh, which I don't think you get much higher than that. She, she fairly knew the city. She wanted to get involved in city government. And I think she'd be a great addition to this, this board. And I, I recommend her have the appointment confirmed.
Anyone further? So motions to confirm the appointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that was B and C.
Yeah, C is for the city council to fill a, at-large appointment to the Community Preservation Committee. We sent that out to personnel through Jeffrey and we had, you know, one applicant so far, and I still out there. But I think we're gonna need at least two positions on that committee. Jason Ferrera, who was a former city councillor here, Ward Four City Councillor, came down and gave us a nice talk. He wants to give back to the community. He lives in the community, has a couple of children that live near a park. He gave all the benefits of the, you know, the community preservation issues that are in the city, especially Scott's Tower, what's happening up there, Kennedy Park, and many other things in the community. And he was, he was forward with us and he really wants to have his voice on this committee, and I think he'd be a great addition. I'm glad he stepped forward.
Counsel Jordan.
Yeah, just briefly, I'm so pleased to hear Jason's name, that he stepped forward to this. He's, he's a wonderful person and has a beautiful family. And he's just the type of person I think would be fantastic on the CPA. And of course, he's a former colleague of ours. He's, he's just a wonderful person. So I'm very thrilled that he'll volunteer to step up to help us in this way. We're very lucky to have Jason.
So motions, oh, Counsel Rivera.
Yeah, I just echo Counsel Jordan's sentiment about Jay. I call him Jay, I'm sorry. Jay, with regards to that, but the only travesty for me is that there's only one applicant. And I think for us, or maybe a CPA, the Community Preservation Commission can possibly work on trying to get the word out when there's openings. It's, it's better for us to have more people civically participate in civic, local government. That's just, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yep.
I believe Jeffrey might have something to say. And I know he gave that to the Personnel Department, maybe about two months ago. And we did have him, Jason, come forward, but, but hopefully it's still out there so people can see that, I guess, on the website. And hopefully, maybe people watching the meeting tonight will want to get involved in a very important committee, and it does some good work.
Yep, posting's still up. So to confirm the appointment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twelve D, command public service refer the city solicitor review two dash one five six and one six two. Charter covering legal opinions and provide a legal opinion explaining, recommend it's been complied with. Counsel Toman.
Yeah, this was a little contentious on this issue. Counsel Puelo, if you want to weigh in on this. We had an issue trying to have the, actually, two of our attorneys couldn't make it, and one was at another event that night. And hopefully, we were gonna try to get her back in at the end of the meeting, but she couldn't get back on to the thing. But I think one, one was out of town and another one was at the license board meeting. So we had decided to have this complied with, but if Counsel Puelo wants to weigh in on this, if you have any.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really quickly, I won't rehash the entire thing. But I, I just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank Counsel Bartley for his passion and everything you guys have said during these meetings. I think you guys have always been very fair. And you as a chairman, Pete, you know, you always let me rant and rave, so I appreciate it. You've always been very, very fair. But just very quickly, I just want to, you know, everybody can go back and watch the tape and go back on the other issues. But I do want to push back on this notion that keeps coming up, that city employees are above some kind of criticism. And I mean, that just, to me, like, people that are here, you guys work for the City of Hoyoke. You guys work for the taxpayers and you work for voters. And you don't work for city employees. And we appreciate all the hard work they do. We appreciate all the hours that they put into the job. But somebody that's making, that just got a raise up to six figures, is not above criticism. And the fact that people can sit here and just, oh, well, this person, absolutely not. And, you know, in my opinion, I think that what happened was pretty cut and dry. They didn't provide an opinion. You know, they say that they did. I think it's pretty clear. Everybody understands at this point that they didn't. There's a tape out there, all the, you know, they didn't do it. But, you know, what's, what's, what I don't agree with is that they got away with it with approval of this council, but it's either here nor there. I just really want to push back on that notion, though, like, moving forward, city employees are not above criticism, especially people making six figures. Thank you.
Anyone further?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counsel Toman.
Yeah, just, and, and I respect that, Counselor, and I know the whole issue we went through, and it's, it goes back to probably already March or something. And I know there was a discussion back and forth with one of our attorneys. But I, I just think that, and, and they're not above, you know, like, above the law, just like anybody, like any of us here. But I think we got to show respect to our employees too, and how we treat them and how we talk to them. So, you know, sometimes, you know, we say things and we really mean, mean it, what we're saying, but maybe how we say it. There's, there's, there's ways that we can say things and try to be respectful of others. And I've always tried to be respectful and, and I know some of us get, you know, we get a little bit upset for something and what happens. And we might not be happy about a vote or how something happened with a lawsuit that's going on or them coming in here and saying how much we gotta pay this person because now they're retired and whose fault was it? It, you know, wasn't our fault and whatever happened. But I think in the future, I mean, I'm not gonna be here, but I, I've tried to show people respect. And sometimes, you know, my wife will tell you that sometimes I don't back people up. I'm not confrontational. I try not to be. I try to be peaceful in what happens in our, in our doings. And sometimes I fall short when I don't tell somebody that maybe we ought to, you know, cut the, cut the dialect a little bit. And I think that's important, you know, no matter who we are. So I, I think just taking that, I understand your frustrations with this whole issue. I respect you and I respect your work you do, and I respect every city, single councillor here that has an opinion. And hopefully, we can move forward with, with a little bit more cordiality, I guess the word is, with each other. You know, like, my thing is, sometimes we used to do the thing at the post office when somebody get upset, or the boss got upset, why can't we all get along? And I think I'm gonna leave that with one of my slogans, why can't we just all get along?
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I appreciate the fact that the committee had a discussion about the order. But I would hate to lose within the discussion about the importance of having respect, which I believe I consistently bring to the table here in the chamber. I think it's important not to lose sight of the legal obligations of the employees. If the city council asks for a written legal opinion, the law department is obligated to provide us with a written legal opinion, not somebody else's written legal opinion, their legal opinion. And if somebody uses a tone or an adjective or, you know, emotional display that is not great, yeah, it's not great, but it doesn't excuse the failure to do your legal obligation and provide the opinion. So I just want that in the record because I would hate to see this setting a precedent that if a department doesn't want to do something, that they just don't have to do it. And I don't think that's good precedent to be set in this body. Thank you.
So this has been, oh, Counsel Rivera.
Thank you. Just to piggyback off of some of the comments I said, I, I think the main point is respect. And, and I think for me, it's, we're in twenty twenty-three now, and the system is different. People that work now are different. People don't like to be disrespected while at work or feel disrespected. So if you speak to them in a tone or a particular manner that offends them, more than likely, they're not gonna do what you asked them to do. And if they do, they're gonna do it in a manner that is not gonna be the most effective or efficient. So to Counselor Toman's point, with regards to speaking to some of our city employees, there has to be a way where we can hold them accountable, right, for certain things. But at the same time, have a mutual respect so that way they still feel motivated to do the things that we're asking them to do. I, I know for a fact that the system that we have right now, our employment system we have now right now, is one where someone can go somewhere else tomorrow because they'll make more money there. And because of that, I think that we as a body have to kind of understand that. Not to say that we don't hold them accountable because no one is above the law. above the law, right, or the system, whatever you want to call it, but at the end of the day, there's two pieces to it, they don't have to do what we ask them to do anymore, it's different now, like, we live in a different society, as much as I would want them to, it's just we live in a different society today, and there has to be somewhat of a mutual relationship between the both of us, them and us, the department heads and the body, with regards to that, so, thank you.
Counsel Jordan.
Yeah, the other thing is, with the advent of social media, I also think that we have to also consider how we don't go on social media and start blasting our coworkers on social media, I think that's something we also have to consider, too, because I've noticed there's a trend of that, which it's like, one thing, I, I've been accused of, and some of them are true, but so, so, some, some of which, it's, I will say, but, one thing I will never be accused of and be guilty of is, you'll never hear me get on social media, start blasting people, you know, you're this, and you're that, that's, I, I, it's bad enough that when we have our discussions and differences here, or otherwise, but some of the stuff I see out on social media, and on Facebook, and I'm on Facebook, everybody knows that, but you really gotta consider refraining, you know, this one's a this, and this one's a that, because we're, we're leading the city, and if we're out there blasting people, you know, and blasting each other, that's gotta stop, you know, we're, we're hearing about what's gotta stop, and what's gotta this and that, the least of which I hear is what's coming out of this room, it's what I'm seeing on social media is intense, and, you know, and that trickles down to a lot of these other type of discussions that I'm seeing with other people are saying stuff, and I just cringe at some of these things that are reported to me, I don't really follow what other people are saying that much and that closely, but people will say, oh, Kevin, did you see this, and, you know, it's kind of hard not to look, but that, that's a big piece of it, so just, just think about that before you go and hit post, you know, and you start saying, well, everybody over fifteen years has done this, 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 you know, th- those kind of comments don't help, and then, as far as the rest of it is, I think it'll, it'll all work out, what I don't, what I do get concerned about on these decorum issues is, people need to be, we need to have decorum, but the other piece is, no question, but that doesn't mean we can't have healthy disagreement on issues, that's important, too, we need to be, this is a democracy, this system is designed to be adversarial at a certain level, a healthy adversarial, people, keep it to issues, I think if we keep it to issues, and follow basic protocols, we're gonna be just fine, because that's been going on since time immemorial, right, and then we try to do our best to just say, hey, it's about the issues, it's not that person, we just disagree, because, you know, okay, you guys disagree with me on a lot of things, and I disagree with a number, often the majority of the room on a great number of things, but that's okay, that's completely, that's perfectly healthy, and that's the way it's supposed to be, that's the way our whole government is set up at the state, federal, and local level, so anyways, I, I think if we do that, we're gonna be just fine.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, I, I'm gonna state it for the record, so I'm guilty when it comes to posting on social media, but I don't think it's any different from what's said, actually, it's even better when it's on social media, because of some of the things that are said in this room that are permanent, there's years of video, and comments, and, man, we should have a show on Netflix, so I do post on social media, but that's because I have a great following, and I owe it to the people who follow me, and I, I never try to disrespect, I don't write a counselor's name, I just write how I see things, when I see things, and I call it out, I don't write a name or anything, and I just put it out there, because I owe it to the public, and I owe it to the people, not to mention, it's freedom of speech, and if things do bother people when it's on social media, then what people really need to do is take a look at yourself, take a deep look, and I suggest watching some of the videos, and, and seeing how we interact with one another, people are watching us, and I know I've been accused of the feelings, oh my God, the feelings, and you know what, I'd rather have feelings than not to, I'd rather have those feelings, because I embrace them, because I love the city enough, but to be called out and said, oh, we don't, you know, we don't work on just love, and da-da-da, well, maybe we should, maybe we would be better off, stop hurting one another, because we are just killing each other softly, and, and the city is watching us do it, the city is watching us do this, I don't even want to look up there, because I've been, I know it's late, and I'm pretty upset at myself because I'm taking this time right now to express this, but if there's more hate, and more damage on that time that's up there, than good stuff, stuff that would actually make the city move forward and work better, and, and with respect to one another, then we need to start making, you know, take a good look at yourself, listen to the comments, listen to the people who are talking about us on, on Hello, Holyoke, or social media, TikTaki, whatever, whatever you're into, so I just wanted to state that for the record, thank you.
I'm just gonna say, I like the song.
You're killing me softly?
Just, just saying, just saying, Counsel Tomlin.
I think we just picked up another one that Kevin had, Time Immemorial, is that it, Joe? Make sure you write that one down, that's an important one.
No charge.
No charge on that one, yeah, and when, when he said that, after he fit, after he said the first two, I knew it was you, so that's, that's okay.
They give names.
But I, I, I just want to say briefly that maybe that's why I'm not on Facebook, or Instagram, or Twitter, or X, and I think, you know, I have this because I... Uh, X, right, yeah, when I say Twitter, okay, which is X now, right? Or Tik, yeah, TikTok, and, and I, I just think, sometimes we're too much in tune with these things, you know, it's a necessity, you, you leave your house, and you forget your phone home, and you turn around, it's like, I need my, what if something happens to me, I need my phone, so, you know, I, I send texts, or I send pictures, or I see my grandkids, but I, I think it's important that, you said it right, Kevin, you know, it's a democracy, it's a healthy discussion, you know, there's a lot of times I, I agree with you, and, and Linda and David, there's a lot of times I disagreed, but that's, that's healthy, that's what it's all about, and, and, and I think we need that, too, and if you're using the social media, that we have to show respect, and it's, it's not always easy, because one thing, one person gets upset, then he's gonna shoot something at somebody else, and she's gonna say this, and, you know, that's why I'm away from it, I, you know, I, I don't know if I'm missing out on anything, but I, I don't feel I am, I really, I don't think I am, so, but anyways, that show respect, not only in person, but online, I think that's the key.
So motion that's complied with.
Oh, we got one more?
Oh, Counsel.
Oh, one more, Counsel. I think everybody knows I don't do social media, that's why I have the two daughters around.
We're two old timers here.
But, but I, I just wanted to say one thing, I love you guys.
All right, all right.
Group hug after the meeting.
Love, group hug.
Guinness after the meeting.
It's complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're getting to the end here.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Uh, DGNR, thirteen A, Command DGNR, who was referred, City Council Continue to Grow and Host Increased Number of Events, uh, that's a long one, uh, this is gonna be, recommend that the order has been complied with and referred to the mayor to provide a checklist.
Counsel Ramblini. I will be so officiate, okay, this is my first time talking at all tonight, by the way, thank you very much, I'm here, don't you worry, don't talk for the, yeah, all right, anyway, uh, so this order was filed by Counsel Madana Velez, if he wants to add anything to this, I will definitely let him, but I know that we both talked about the reason why this order was filed, there have been several events, different events, where it seems like maybe there's confusion on not only who should go to what department for what permits, but also whose responsibility it is to notify folks when there is, for example, a road closure, specifically, that's what I was interested in, because I have, I'm often notified by business owners if, if there's something that happens that they're unaware of, so Mike Gallagher from DPW was kind enough to join us, unfortunately, other city departments were not able to, but, you know, we talked about whose responsibility it is, it's actually the person who is hosting the event, it's their responsibility to notify folks if road closures happen, but I think it was Counsel Reagan who actually recommended some sort of a checklist be established, just something that the public can better understand what is needed based on the type of event that they're having, but also recognizing that this is not necessarily something that is within the City Council purview, so that is why we made a recommendation to send it to the mayor, that also having some sort of a checklist be established, and that's all I got.
All right, so recommended has been complied, oh, Counsel from all of us, it's kind of hard when I can't see the screen, so, here we go.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counsel Tessa Murphy Ramblini for your, for taking up this order yesterday, unfortunately, I did have a conflict, so I would not be able to make it, but I, I do want, I also thank you to the rest of the committee for the, I guess, the recommendation, this order was put in through DGR, but it was also copied to ordinance, and, you know, what I want to say is, there is another order that we discussed in the last ordinance committee, which is around special events with the police, and I think, you know, that's a perfect example of an ordinance, or possibly change, or whatever that needs to happen within our body in order to make sure that the special events planning is sufficient and streamlined, I do, you know, I do agree that the creation of the checklist, which I am looking forward to, hopefully, it will be done, you know, sooner rather than later, through the mayor, I think that would be a huge help, but the reality is, like, there's still sort of contradicting and vague ordinances that we have, whether it be about the cost for permitting, the difference between trailers and hawkers, hawkers and, and food trucks, and what it means when the special events happening, but you actually have a food truck at a certain location, but then a special event is happening in that same location, and I think those, you know, those are a lot of questions that have been brought up in the last year or so, and unfortunately, I will not be continuing this conversation as a city counselor, but I am a member of the community that does help put on special events, whether it be Hold of Pride, Balde Nales, or even smaller events with nonprofits, like the Trump retreat with Enlace, and I think all of them, what they have in common is that we all have to go to city departments in order to make sure that we get the specific permits, licenses, and that we're all on the same page, and I think if, you know, maybe the, the, the checklist will help, I, I do believe it will help a little bit, but I do believe that we need, as a council, we should take it a step further and look deeper into our ordinances to make sure that it is very clear, just again, as I mentioned, just an example with Counsel Puelos, order around the police and special events, because I think it's, it's not clear to our city departments, to department heads, and in turn, it's not clear to our community members that are trying to do a lot of the good things in our community, so other than that, it's still in ordinance, and whoever the ordinance chair is, we'll see what happens in twenty twenty-four, maybe they'll, they will want to take it up, and I can continue the conversation with them, but I think this was a good preliminary, and thank you for Mike for coming out yesterday, I know there were a lot of different conflicts with other department heads, I know Sean is on his way out, so he, you know, definitely was like, no, I'm not taking any, any new meetings right now, but left knows to say that, thank you.
So, Counsel Reagan.
Just add real quick, not to prolong it, but with, with the chair said, and what we said as a committee is, and we, we recognize what Counsel Madana Velez put together here, and it is important that this streamlining take place, and the checklist is one small way of doing it, someone brought up, you know, some of the events in the city, and one, one mentioned was, was the parade committee, and Celebrate Holyoke, and a couple others, but what the parade committee does this as well as anybody, and maybe they'd be a good example, they understand the importance of each of these departments, and what it means to two major events and back-to-back days, the road race and the parade itself, and the parade committee, about a month before the actual weekend, will invite each of these departments to a luncheon, or the representative, and they will go over all of the streamlined connections as to what's gonna happen on those days, and, and what, you know, what's in place, and what needs to be in place, and the parade committee, you know, backs up a lot of it with, with, with paying for things, and, and working with the, with the city, so it's, it's, it's a good ordinance, and I think at the moment, though, it takes the mayor to enforce the, the checklist, to enforce the, the departments getting together, but down the road, we've been talking about this for years, we need to do something where it's more streamlined on the books itself.
My back gave out. Uh, let's see here, uh, this is complied with, referred to the mayor with a checklist, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is DGNR is referred from Counsel Bartley, resolution in support of paint stewardship legislation recommend be adopted, Counsel Ramblini.
Thank you, this is a follow-up from a discussion that we had for an order that was filed by Counsel Rivera, late summer, early fall, and Counselor Bartley filed this to have the City Council approve a resolution, and so this is related to pending paint stewardship legislation, and hopefully urging the Massachusetts State Legislature to enact the pending paint stewardship legislation in an effort to decrease inappropriate discarding of paint, hopefully save us money, and I'll let Counsel Bartley add anything if necessary.
So motion is to receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? C is from DGNR, special permit application to operate a gasoline station at eight twenty High Street, recommended special permit granted with the following condition, that the hours of operation would be six AM to eleven PM, seven days a week, Counsel Ramblini.
Thank you, Mr. President, so we were joined by two individuals, one is James K., I, I believe that was his name, and the attorney for the owner of the gas station at eight twenty High Street, the, this is right when you get off the exit from three ninety-one, so this was an application for a special permit for a gas station and convenience store, there was a discussion, Counsel McGivern will, I'm sure, address this, but we, he was not convinced that we needed to do the special permit, I believe the Law Department was gonna be looking into this, because we may have amended the law to allow the use outright, but all of that being said, the, we did decide, because it was clear that was in front of us, that this is a special permit, that we should review, so as the president mentioned, the hours would be six AM to eleven PM, seven days a week, they're not doing any substantial work on the property, they did, they have made some improvements, if you drive by, it looks noticeably nicer, it does have a full liquor license, and it was a public hearing, and there was no one that came from the public, either for or against, so we want to thank the applicant for his investment, and the committee voted to approve, or recommend the approval of the special permit application.
Counsel Reagan.
Quickly, Mr. President, this special permit, when John from Worcester opened up the, bought the gas station, and opened it up with a convenience store, was a required special permit to allow a gas station and convenience store exist on the, on the same property and operate, what was becoming quite apparent was across the country, gas stations sell milk, cookies, snacks, loaves of bread, convenience stuff, so when someone stops to fill up their car on the way home from work, they pick up what they need for dinner that night, or they pick up what they, what they want, and we got to a point where it made no sense to keep this special permit on the books, it's my recollection, we took it off the books, and said this is an outright use in the gas station if they so choose, as long as they live up to the codes, you know, they have enough parking, they, they have to, you know, abide by whatever building or health department codes are enforced, and I, I could not get, the Law Department, I could not get any, the only person that agreed was the- agreed was the building department commissioner gave the owner, the new owner of the gas station, you know, the right to, the occupancy permit, because he says you don't need anything else. And so I, I said I would vote for it because I voted for the original, and I have no problem with this. The package store license was added through Mayor, Mayor Morse, that was those package store licenses that became available. I forget through what program, but that, that didn't even change the permit. That just was added to the, to the outright allowed in that store itself. And Attorney Vissinette was going to look into this, if we could suspend the rules, just to see if he has anything to add. If, if we go forward to vote, I, the sad part is the gentleman paid for, for the application, paid for a public hearing notice, and probably paying for the lawyer that's representing the former owner and helping them resolve this to get to the bottom of it. But it is what it is.
Motion is suspend rules, ask the lady department for an update. Alls in favor? All opposed? Mike?
Good evening, everybody, and Merry Christmas. Happy Hanukkah to those that celebrate, and Jewish Kwanzaa to those that are attending tomorrow's festivities. I feel like the old Johnny Carson Show with Councilor McGivern here. You are right, sir. There was a change in the definition, and thankfully Attorney Brad Moore had pointed out something in definitions during his presentation, which I picked up from my notes. Looking at that, apparently somewhere during your tenure, Counselor, the change was made to allow that choice to go in as a, let's see, a service station with convenience store or fast food. So that change simplified things, so they didn't have to get two special permits. And in this case, the interesting sort of twist is that, as Attorney Magaleski pointed out, the permit that originally existed on this property has long expired, back from when the Belchers had gotten the approval. So in fact, the instruction to go forward and get a special permit allowed now by right on this property, but it has to be granted by the council. So I, I think this path is the safest one, certainly given the investment, and it certainly covers all the bases. So I didn't mind doing the hunt, Councilor McGivern, and you were absolutely right, that, that it did exist. People just couldn't find it in short order. So thank you, sir, and thanks for the opportunity to clear that up.
Thank you, Attorney Vissinette.
Any further? Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, I just threw the chair to, to Mike. Mike, you're, you're going to send us that site, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, that's, yeah, I, I want, I want to see it in writing. It, it doesn't matter to me, frankly, because the property owner, the business is going to be a real credit to the city. He's put in a substantial investment. At this point, $350,000, which is pretty impressive. And I, I think the, I think it is a, it's a gateway. It's really right there at the top of high street. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about this. It's more investment to the city, especially on the commercial side. And I think this owner is going to be a, a real credit to Hoyoke. Thank you.
So are we, I guess, going through with the special permit to grant it?
Yes.
Yes.
Even though?
Yes.
Okay.
Just before us.
All right, so Clerk of Callow.
It sounds like a vote in vain, but.
It's vote in vain, that's how I see it, but.
I don't, we don't have a written opinion.
Yeah. But let's just, all right. So motion is to grant the special permit with the condition, Clerk of Callow, if yes, you're voting.
Can I make a motion that we grant the special permit with a, with all the conditions as, as were added to the special permit itself, but if the special permit is not needed, that the petitioner be refunded their money for application?
A second. So Clerk of Callow.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Bergos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Fuele?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote approved that one. D is already done. E, come in, D G N R, declare the lot at East Hampton Road as surplus. Recommend it's been adopted. Councilor Murphy-Rumbelletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this item is for the East Hampton Road parcel, which is an undeveloped forested lot, approximately 53.5 acres in size, zone general business. The property itself is situated south of the log cabin property, north of adjacent protected Massachusetts Fish and Game Wildlife Reserve areas. Contains significant wetland resources and is designated for both estimated and priority habitat of rare and endangered species by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Last evening, it was discussed, and the committee voted four to one that the property be declared surplus.
Sorry, my back.
I feel bad for him.
All right. So further discussion. So motion is to, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the importance of this is declaring a surplus makes it available for disposition. It's one of our two votes we have to take under Mass General Law when the, when the city wishes to dispose of property. The, the second vote is the mayor only can, or delegate, delegate can negotiate the, the price, and, but the price needs to be confirmed by the, by the, by the city council itself. It takes two-thirds vote of the city council to declare something surplus. Now, what, what happened here was Fish and Wildlife came to the mayor with an offer. The mayor didn't solicit it. And they did so with the, they have the, the right to do the conservation and the wetlands and everything, and it's only three state agencies that I think can actually do that. We in Hoyoke have a tremendous amount of land that is protected, not to, not to mention Mountain Reservation, which comes under D C R. It's, it's important. It's protecting the mountain range. This particular property, I, I question could be developed. It would be difficult for a developer, and I wanted the city to go out for an R F P. Unfortunately, when the mayor got the offer, he had to put both votes in front of us simultaneously. So this particular motion to declare it surplus in the first meeting with, with Fish and Wildlife Game failed to come out of committee on a two-two vote. But the mayor and the city purchasing department still went forward with an R F P to see if there were any private people out there that might be interested in developing it. We were told by Jamie from the purchasing department that no one responded to the R F P. Unfortunately, even though the city council, I, I felt like we asked for it, the committee didn't, you know. But, you know, the, the failure of the surplus, declaring the property surplus and available, kind of put the, put the, everybody behind a rock in a hard place in terms of accepting the offer, I mean, in terms of the R F P, which becomes a now response from the state to the R F P, and not the state coming to the mayor with an offer. So I, I, I believe, you know, unless someone came out of the, out of the blue with, with an offer in terms of development, which is probably unlikely, that at this point, we got to at least declare the property surplus to back up the mayor, the purchasing department, and to allow this, even if we continue to market it, but to allow this to be available for sale. If the mayor continues to accept the offer from Fish and Wildlife Games, next year, city council or council can, can look at that and determine if they agree with it.
So motion is to approve, Clerk of Callow, if yes, you're voting to.
So I, I just want to say a couple of things.
Sure.
This is my first time sitting on this committee, and this whole particular property matter and the way it came up, to me, just seemed odd. Because to me, I don't see where we have a local assessed value of 1.1 million, and then the new assessed value for 270,000, and then that's being considered market rate, and that last night, when, or at the meeting, the people that were there just thought everything was going to go through and be done. And I just feel like we hardly have any land as it is, and it seems like we need to be marketing it aggressively. Like, I remember when Lori was our procurement person, I mean, she'd go to certain publications and this and that, that were sort of, I don't know, targeted for certain things or whatever. And I just really want to make sure that the city is getting the value for the land. We don't have much land. And so I just find myself very conflicted on this whole deal. It, it just doesn't sound good to me. Thank you.
Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not conflicted. So this is a, this is a fairly important vote, I think. I completely disagree that this should be declared surplus because there is no rush, there is no need to do it. This is 53 and a half acres of land owned by the city, taken through tax title for non-payment of taxes when it was valued a million dollars. Let me just clarify something, that the assessment is much different from the appraisal. Now, this is their appraiser came out with a number, they hired the appraiser and it came up with a number. That doesn't mean he's an independent appraiser. That doesn't mean anything. It just, he came up with a number based upon what? He doesn't even have any comps for this. So to go ahead and declare this property surplus, I think is, at this stage, is premature. I think a lot more thought has to be put into it, especially from planning and economic development. But, you know, we know what conservation wants to do. We, we know that Fish and Wildlife wants to have it. They've already got thousands of acres in the city as it is. So I, I would just say, it's, right now, it's in City Hoyoke's balance sheet. I don't think there's any kind of issue relative to liability. That's a red herring. There's been no issues whatsoever brought up at, for time immemorial. So I, I would say, just leave it the way it is. When, when a plan is developed, we can come back in orderly fashion and take the vote at that point. So I will consequently vote no on this. Thank you.
Counselor Jordane?
I guess my inquisitiveness around it is, one, if the argument is declare it surplus, which we all know is the two-thirds vote, right, and it's just, I'll pass it so we can go market it. Meanwhile, you already have the person who wants to buy it coming to the committee meeting, and they're already having all these discussions. So how does that reconcile with declare it surplus so we can go market it when you've already got the person you want to give it to all lined up? So are we being told accurate information here? So I guess my question is, if that's true, which I don't think there's anything inherently insidious with that, I would only say then keep marketing it, right, and see what other arrangements you get. Why is this step, which is important in the procedural process, just taken, and why are we just giving this vote until we know the real deal? Just bring in the real deal, and then we vote? It seems like, you know, oh, yeah, just declare it surplus. Meanwhile, we're talking to this one, and is there something going on here in, in terms of that? Are, are we getting all the information? Because it just, it doesn't seem to add up. If you're already got the person lined up, the state, apparently, to go and buy this, then just whenever that deal's cooked, bring it in, and we go through the steps. Or are we doing enough to really market it to everyone, and how earnest of an effort that will be? You know, I, I would just, just sort of a red flag goes off. I'd be happy to hear if there's an explanation, though. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
To my understanding, the lot is not buildable. But hey, if others believe that it is, then I guess they know more. The other piece is, is who's maintaining the property now, if we are? And if it does come off of our hands, who would maintain the property after the fact? Would we still maintain the property if the gaming and wildlife, whoever it is, comes in and takes control of it? What, what are the costs of maintaining it now? And what would the cost be if they're, they, they own it? There are a couple of things. Do we have someone lined up to buy it? Will we have someone lined up to buy it within the next three years? Because if not, then we, it looks like we'll be on the hook for maintaining it for the next three to five years, or whenever it is we do decide, or we do sell it. I think for, for me, there's, there are some places, and, and I do understand the, the, the argument where we are, we don't have any land, right, to build. A lot of the land that we do have is on land, or is conservation land. And there's a gift and a curse with having Mountain, right? Mountain is cool, because it's great to have it. But at the same time, because we have it, it prevents a lot of development in the future around that area, more or less. And it brings in people like the gaming and wildlife and the conservation commissions and D G R, I mean, D C R, to, to then save the land that's there. It's unfortunate for a city like us in Hoyoke that we're strapped for cash. We can't, that we're in that situation. But the reality of what it is, there's two things going on at the same time that the city kind of has somewhat control of, which is development and, and building out economic stuff and saving wildlife and conservation. But at the same time, we don't, because there, there are other entities much larger, right, that are trying to do things with capacity that we don't have. So I think I would want it, I would vote in favor of keeping this property if there was something to do with it, if there was a plan. If there's no plan, then I, it's hard for me to vote in favor of keeping the property. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, sometimes this body, like, loves to discuss things that aren't actually on the agenda. Tonight, what's on the agenda is that we either declare the surplus or not. It's not about a proposal that is before us, it's about declaring it surplus. And if everyone wants to come to the next D G R meeting, whenever it is where we discuss the proposal, that's fantastic. It's 10 minutes to 11. I would love to answer some of the comments that I've heard tonight. But again, what's on the agenda is that this is either declared surplus or it's not. I will say that right now, that huge piece of land, 53.5 acres in size, is currently owned by the city. It is not generating any tax revenue at all. It's not. And if anyone was, for those who were not able to attend D G R last night, totally encourage you to watch it. Really fun conversation. But again, tonight, just about declaring something surplus. And I think this body sort of likes to, you know, think pretty far ahead on things, you know, when we don't necessarily need to. This is literally just to declare it surplus. Thank you.
Counselor Gibner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention that it was my understanding that this, this parcel is not developable. So conserving it, a piece of property that's already owned by the city, I think is a good idea. And to put that financial burden on another entity and still benefit the city, I, I think is a win-win for us. So, thanks.
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah. I'm sort of paid to think forward and think down and ahead. That's, that's what I get paid to do here. So I'm, so I don't know if that's a criticism that I'm thinking ahead, but if it is, I, I guess I'm, I also am guilty of that accusation. So I would say, though, first of all, if the state takes it over, how much in taxes will they pay? So the argument is made, well, let's just get it and give it to them so that, you know, we're not collecting any taxes. Like, at first glance, that, that makes a lot of sense. And then you're like, oh, okay. But then if the state buys it, how much tax? Well, zero. And then, then the argument is made, well, we're maintaining the property. I understand it to be a wooded lot. What, what, what is there to maintain? I don't know. Are we raking the leaves? I mean, what exactly is the maintenance cost? So I don't know. These are interesting arguments, but when you actually peel them one layer back, they don't seem to make a lot of sense. That having been said, if this goes through, I'm, I'm sure I'm happy to, to consider supporting, if it's a good proposal. I understand there's some number being south of 300,000 being kicked around. Maybe that is a good deal for us. If there's no other highest and best use, I'm just making sure that we're doing our due diligence, that we've completely marketed this. And I'm not convinced yet that that's quite the case, but I'm happy to keep an open mind.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
All I will say is I would love for everyone to watch D G R from last night and the meeting before that, when a lot of these things were discussed. And I look forward to having a more robust discussion about proposals. But tonight, on the agenda is just to declare it surplus. Thank you.
All right. So thirteen.
No, no, I'm sorry. Taking my glasses off.
That's what I was hoping. All right. So anyway, so 13E motion is to declare it surplus.
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordine?
No.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramblede?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Eight yeas, five knees.
Thirteen F, Committee on DGR, who is referred, uh-
It's defeated.
Yeah, we all know the rules.
All right, moving on.
DGR was referred, City Council, of course, Master of Law, Chapter thirty B. City accept the proposal, so this would be, recommend it be adopted. Counsel Murph Ramblede.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this proposal that was submitted, we were joined by the applicants, Jeff Diaz and Tiago Martins. They actually renovated the nearby new apartments on Dwight and Walnut Street. And this proposal is for a one point three million investment. Are you, are you good? Do you, should I? I mean, okay, it's just kind of rude. The proposal is for a one point three million dollar investment. It represents six townhouses. Construction would hopefully start between twelve to eighteen months. And that's my update. Thank you. The committee voted unanimously to approve this proposal. Thanks so much.
I'll second the committee report.
So thirteen F, clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordine?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramblede?
You bet, yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Absolutely, yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thirteen G, Committee on DGR, Boys and Girls Club, and sale of one eighteen Newton Street. Recommend it be adopted. Counsel Murph Ramblede.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were joined this evening, last night, by Eileen Kavanaugh and Kelly McGivern, who is on the Board of Directors for the Holyoke Boys and Girls Club. The proposal was for fifteen, to purchase the lot for fifteen thousand dollars. And this is a lot that abuts their park and the playground area. They would like to build a youth center and after-school program, primarily serving teens between the ages of thirteen and eighteen. They want it to have sort of like a campus feel. So we, the committee voted unanimously to approve the proposal to sell the lot to the Holyoke Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I'm just, just quickly on thirteen F, the two gentlemen that came in, you're talking, wow, what, already incredible investment over there as it is, and now they're going to expand it, and they're going to make, create some beautiful townhouses, create additional housing. They even said last night that they had commercial space. They said, no, we don't, we want more housing. And they're, they've got it banged out. This, this, the plans that they showed us, I know Jeff has it, the photographs, they're incredible. So that's, something's going to be really exciting for the city. On this one, for the Boys and Girls Club, let me just, let me just look at my, yeah, Newton, okay, then, the, it's, Newton Street runs peril to commercial, and this is going to link up behind where the basketball court is, and on Newton Street. And it's going to be, I think, a forty-seven hundred square foot building for, for teens. And we're always, we're consistently talking about the lack of teen programming, and especially for the thirteen to eighteen-year-olds. And that's exactly what Eileen and the, and Kelly and the Boys and Girls Club were trying to hit. And it's, they can't do the programming now at the current facility because of restrictions relative to age groups kind of mixing. They've got daycare there now, and they can't do programming until, I think, five thirty PM. This will allow for programming right after school. So it's a, it's a really exciting plan, and I'm hopeful that they have the financing. But they did, both entities did show letters of credit, and they both have the fiscal capability to buy the, buy the parcel from the city. And that's as far as we can go. But I'm pretty sure both entities are going to see their proposals come to fruition, and they're going to be really nice amenities for the city. So I fully support both.
Counsel Rivera.
McGivern had his hand first.
No, I had you first.
Okay. I saw him first, but that's cool, I'll go. So my questions, and I'm, again, I wasn't able to be there. I think my question is if they already have secured funding for this project. And my question around that is because historically, we've done this before with the Boys and Girls Club, right? And the funding wasn't necessarily secured for the project that they had before. And I'm speaking specifically around the Montom project. And I know this because I worked there at the time. It was something that was sold to me as a kid, growing up. So there, there's this thing for me where it's like, we're, I'm okay with giving, or selling them the lot at this price. But the idea is, for how long? And for when? Right? If it's fifteen, twenty years down the road, and they still haven't built it, the lot will still be an empty lot. And we could have possibly sold it to someone else that could possibly build on it. So I guess the concern for me would be is, what are the plans? What funding have they already kind of received to put towards that? And where strategically have they positioned themselves? And then the other piece to me with regards to not being able to run teen programming within the building because of restrictions, that's due to EEC restrictions. But to my understanding, I thought that's why they, they wanted the girls, when the contract with Girls Inc. ran out next door. To my understanding, that the teen center was supposed to move to the, to the spot at the Girls Inc. So because, because that's not happening, I also have questions with regards to what, like, what are we doing with the extra space? And it's none of my business, but like, if we're not able to use that space for teen space, why not? I think that's the question. But again, I'm not against it, I'm totally, I'm a Boys and Girls Club kid, it gave me what I am today. But at the end of the day, no one is above. There are questions that I, that I have with regards to them taking on a property, and do they have the full funding to actually go through with some of the stuff, or even beginning to be, to begin the beginning stages, at least? Thank you.
Next was Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was a great DGR meeting, and as I stated at the DGR, I disclosed my perception of a conflict. Ethics Commission has told me it's not a conflict, it's a five oh one three, five oh one two, five oh one two three C, when I'm always saying that wrong, not-for-profit organization, Boys and Girls Club.
That's what it is, Joe.
Thank you, Counsel. I always say it backwards with the, with the numbers.
Don't worry about it.
As we know, the Boys and Girls Club, for their existence, not only serves the community of Holyoke, but serves the underprivileged community of Holyoke. And what they do is, is to be commended when it's working with, with children who, who are underprivileged, and children who look for the services that they provide. Under the, you know, the current leadership, and I'm talking about Eileen, and replacing some wonderful directors, the Cosmos, and the people over the years, you know, we've seen a lot of kids come out of the Boys and Girls Club and go on to be incredibly successful. And their services expand. This lot, which has been vacant for, we think, probably twenty-five years, if you drive by, which I have twice in the last couple of months, there's a camper on it. I can't quite figure that one out. I was kind of told what was being sold in and out of there. It's a parking lot, you know, for the street on a, on a regular basis. It is not being kept clean, it is not being taken care of by the city. There's trash everywhere. And it's, with the exception of the, I believe it's an alleyway or an easement, you know, it abuts the, the property, the playground across from the Boys and Girls Club. And the design would be to bring everything together so that the, the teens would have a safe place to go after school, during the school year, and certainly a safe place to go during the, the summer months and the other months of the year. It just, it makes a lot of sense on, on all. There's the, the discussion of the monies to pay for the building would have been a great question to ask at the committee level when Eileen was with us. Question was not asked. It's important. But as far as the sale, I'm confident with the history of the Boys and Girls Club, they're going to do the right thing. My disclosure is verbally on record with the city clerk, with the city council, with the DGR committee, and I, I plan to file the disclosure for them in writing before the end of the week. But I just wanted to, to state that so the, the baby who was speaking earlier this evening doesn't get me in trouble.
Counsel, hold on, Counsel Murph Ramblede.
Thank you, I just wanted to make two comments. I actually believe it was discussed last night. Counsel Bartley was asking about if the funding was secured, or if they had proof of funds, I'm sorry.
That's right.
And we also talked about the, there's a reverter, which is in all city RFPs, so after a certain amount of time, if there isn't anything acted on, like, that's just like standard in our RFPs. So I just wanted to address those two points. Thank you.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, Counsel Bartley was talking last night about just, just proof of funds to buy it. But that's, that's a good, I didn't get into development because that wasn't my, my place. There would be a standard reverter clause, so that's pretty, that's an excellent point that was brought up. And I misspoke earlier, I can't believe I said this, Joe. It's, this runs parallel with Nick Cosmos Way, and I do apologize to the Cosmos family. So I said, I said commercial space, that, that was, I don't know what happened there. It's late. Thank you.
All right, so clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for this.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordine?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramblede?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
You've already proved that one.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Just to the President, to Counsel Bartley, what did they call it before Nick Cosmos Way? Do you recall?
Bond Street.
Absolutely. My mother actually happened to be born on Bond Street in nineteen sixteen, so.
I didn't-
A little history.
Town, Pete.
Charter rules.
Well, hold on, was this item thirteen H on the agenda?
No, it's not on the agenda. It's, it was at disposition.
Hello, is this part?
No, no.
Okay, but we, it's table and committee.
The meeting was last night.
Meeting was last night.
No, but I was just wondering, how could that be possible? Because if you don't declare it surplus, how do you take bids?
Just-
Oh, but I know that wasn't on the agenda for tonight, so I won't bring it up.
I just wish people would, why, why do you do that, though? Why? See what you're doing, you know what you're doing.
Done, done.
What? What am I doing?
Eleven oh seven.
Let's get along.
Eight. All right, we're on to charter rules.
Charter rules.
Fourty-eight.
Moving forward.
Charter rules refer an order at the committee limit, the amount of public hearings added to the agenda, until ten thirty, eleven. Recommend it be adopted. Counsel Malavales.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this order has been in our committee for a little bit, was put in by Counselor Israel Rivera. And the language, and I'm trying to find the language, I don't know where in my notes, just give me one second, unless someone has it in front of them. Hold on.
Yep. It's on our desk, Counselor.
Center desk.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me. But that is the language that we discussed. It was to add another rule, pretty much says, the public hearings, if a public hearing starts after nine PM, that the public hearing will be continued until a further date, just to make sure that members of the public are able to contribute to the public hearing if they want to say something. Part of the rule as well, it was to make sure that the committee chairs, if they have public hearings, that they mention and they announce to everyone, members of the public, that people can email Jeffrey about their comments for the public hearing. This has to do a lot with, you know, some of the complaints we've gotten, and, you know, it hasn't happened too much where we've had a public hearing open after nine PM, but probably like once or twice, especially with ordinance, when we're taking up a lot of the marijuana ordinances, special permits. So Jeffrey is making sure that people have a chance to contribute if they wish to.
Mr. President?
Counsel Bartley. Yeah, just, I, I would only say, it's, it's a noble idea, except for the fact that there are people that travel great distances to Holyoke, Mass., expecting to have a public hearing. And when you say it must be continued to a future date, that really ties their hands. I mean, so if you want to tweak that language, just say, at it may, and it can be at the option of the petitioner, I'll have no problem with it. But right now, just to say it must be continued? I don't, I don't think that's reasonable. So I, I think you gotta, you gotta loosen that language a little bit, Mr. President. So, so my, my friendly amendment would be to say, it may be continued at the option of the petitioner. If the petitioner wants to go forward, then they go forward.
All right, so motion is to add that language. It was seconded. Counsel Malavales had his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counsel Bacon had a similar sort of concern with it, and I just wanted to be clear, it wasn't that we weren't going to open it, so just an idea. So we had, there were five public hearings on the agenda, and the, all four of them, the first four opened up before nine PM, and then the fifth one happened to open up at nine thirty. Not that we were going to not discuss it, I mean, the public hearing was still open. If the petitioner was there traveling from far, they would still have the opportunity to speak on it. But if other members of the public that wanted to contribute and they weren't able to, because after nine PM they weren't able to stay around, then that will give the opportunity to elongate it. I mean, I, I, yeah, so that was sort of my, that's what I had to Counsel Bacon in the last meeting. And, you know, whatever tweak we can, that's fine, but I think at the root of it all is really just making sure that, you know, we don't have public hearings opening up at nine thirty, ten o'clock, the petitioner comes in, and then when we, as a committee chair, ask, oh, are there any other concerns? And there may be no concerns or no public comments, simply because it's already at ten o'clock, then let's get an opportunity for those people that were there in the beginning, but that just couldn't stay there till seven o'clock for a public meeting. So it wasn't to say that, no, we're not going to take up this public hearing tonight, like, that's not the intention of it. It was just to say, like, if we are, if it is open up after nine PM, we're just going to extend it at least one more meeting, unless it's not allowed to, or we have to, or there's certain dates or limitations that we have to move to pass so long. But I hear you, Counsel Bartley.
Counsel Jordine.
At the risk of being against Counsel Bartley on this, I, I believe the intent of this was that this wasn't about worrying about the petitioner, this is worrying about the public. And the concern is, how can you have a public hearing that's at late at night? Right? I mean, hey, it's, we're opening it up at ten o'clock, where is everybody? How, everyone against? Everyone in favor? I mean, it's like, is that really a public hearing? No, it's not. So this is a good government issue, and I wouldn't really, quite frankly, care if the petitioner said, oh, no, don't worry, I don't care if no public shows up, I'm fine, no objection here. It's, it's not to protect their rights, it's to protect the public's voice, and that was the purpose behind the rule, so I actually support the language as here, which I think serves the basics of good government. I think we talked about this, because rare as it happens, it does, and from time to time, either it gets booked up and, and we're just really late, we, we need to give people real rights to be heard in public hearings, so I think our rules should reflect that.
Counselor Malavales, it'll follow up, or?
Yes, and thank you, Counselor Jordan, for saying that, you know, maybe we wanted to add something like, if a public hearing opens after 9:00 PM, then we have to extend it, something like that, something along those lines, just to make it more clear, because maybe the language is not clear enough, because Counselor Bartley is the second person that brought up this concern, but, you know, to Counselor Jordan's point, that's, the intention is not to, again, not take up any public hearings or anything after 9:00 PM, it's literally just to give the members of the public an opportunity to chime in if they do so, and it's not fair for us to expect people to stay around till 10:00 PM sometimes to make their voices heard. So, if we wanted to make those changes, like, a public hearing opens after 9:00 PM, it needs to extend, and that's one way, but, yeah, I, thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
So, I, I, I agree with everybody, I have no problem with the, I, I heard what the intent would be for the public, but it's the petitioner's paying for it, and if they're coming a long distance, it's just to say, you know, "Sorry, 9:00, and you, you gotta go back to Boston," or wherever, and we've had this before, I don't think it's reasonable. I do hear you about the public having a right to speak, so I, I, I would just suggest that we have the, whoever wrote, I don't know who wrote this, because it's not a legal opinion, so I, I guess I would just, I'd be of the opinion, maybe at this hour, we ought to consider tabling it, and then sending it back, or send it back to committee just to work on the language a little more, to incorporate some of the thoughts that were developed today.
There is no second. So, currently, there was a motion to add the language.
What exactly was the language, again?
It may.
May.
May be continued.
Then you might as well not have the rule, that would be my, my concern with the word "may." "May" means it won't happen. It becomes, then it means basically it's arbitrary. If a public, let's, we'll just, let's just read it, right? "If a public hearing begins after 9:00, it may be continued to a future date unless prohibited by state law." Well, that means we could have something that opens at 9:30, citizens weren't given a night, but we may continue it, or we may not, so that means we just keep doing what we're out, we just keep doing what we're doing, and the public isn't heard, so that is basically current rule, which is nothing. So, that isn't meaningful, that's doing something without doing something. If we have it here, which is, I, I guess I'm trying to understand the other side of the argument here, what we're trying to protect. If a public hearing begins after 9:00, or we could just simply say, "No public hearing shall be opened after 9:00, period." Does that work? As opposed to, this at least says, it's not going to be, the problem, and, and Counselor Bartley's right in one extent, sometimes these things get advertised, 6:30, public hearing, but then the, we have so many stacked up with our joint planning board and everybody working in their best of spirits, but the thing may not open till really late. We gotta make it a point to either open that earlier, or not stack so many on a night. I mean, there's really no other way around it. But I, I think if we're, my, my concern would be, you know, maybe we can get some discussion in, but then again, you gotta have an opportunity where the public still has a right at some reasonable hour to be able to speak, and I don't know how you do it if you either don't continue it, or you make a blank rule that just says, "None after 9:00, period." Doesn't open up after 9:00.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, maybe it happened once that a public hearing got opened after 9:00, and I would just remind the body that there are certain laws that dictate timelines relative to public hearings, and that they have to be accomplished within X days. The situation where, that arose was, I think there was one night where there were five public hearings. Now, we can all make sure every public hearing gets opened before 9:00, if we don't talk for two hours on every public hearing. So, it's not that the committee and the body can't control the time and the opening of the hearings before 9:00. I would actually prefer to see, see the rules say, "All public hearings shall be opened before 9:00," to assure the ability of the public to have input, and also to assure the availability of the petitioners who think they're getting heard at 6:30, because of the way we have to do our advertising. So, to me, it would be preferable for us to put it on ourselves, to say, "We shall open advertised public hearings before 9:00," in the spirit of timeliness, public input, and the rest. That, to me, would be a solution that won't create another problem, but that, I think, would accomplish everything everybody's looking for. If that works, I'd like to offer it as an amendment, that public hearings shall be called, opened before 9:00 PM, as an amendment.
Could, could we say it a little bit differently, where it just says, "No public hearing shall begin after 9:00?"
I'd rather say it in the affirmative.
All right.
Any public hearing shall be opened before 9:00.
All right.
Because otherwise, you might be prohibiting a public hearing from being opened, which then we'd be violating the law.
Okay, so, hold on. So, there was a motion.
I guess it says the same.
It was seconded by Counselor Bartley.
Mm-hmm.
And now there's another motion to change from what he was doing to add that.
Change the last sentence to say, "Every public hearing shall begin before 9:00."
And there's your second to that?
Second.
All right, next is Counselor Rivera.
So, with the change of "shall before 9:00," I, I, I kinda stick more to the suggestion that Counselor Maldonado Velez had put forth, and Counselor Jordan went, "The shall piece." Just because I understand we kinda want to be affirmative or whatnot, but I think the steadfast approach is for ourselves as well, right? The, the 9:00 PM is for ourselves, to make sure that whomever is chairing this meeting, hopefully you're going in and you're mapping things out accordingly. If you know someone is possibly driving out from Boston, then you list them first, you try to list them first in the meeting so that they can get their things, come across, and get, deal with them first. I think us planning ahead of time and having that, that 9:00 o'clock setting tone helps us, whoever's chairing the meeting, plan accordingly in a sense. So, I mean, I feel like the way saying "shall not start," or whatever it is that just got sent forward, I feel like we're still going to have meetings after 9:00. I feel like it's still going to happen, like, with the way, with the "shall," I feel like it's still going to happen, but, hey, it is what it is, thank you.
Counselor Malavales, question?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I just on the amendment, I don't think procedurally, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me, unless we are opening all public hearings before 9:00. In my experience, public hearings are not, you know, when we think of the word "public hearing," the term "public hearing," it's a really a moment for the petitioner to come in and talk about their project or special permit, then members of the public then start, you know, they weigh in, whether they're for or against, but what it has turned into is that then the counselors start debating as well. So, I think, I guess, procedurally, like, if we keep operating in that way, it doesn't make sense to me that all public hearings must open before 9:00, because how can you assure that the public hearings are going to open before 9:00? And I don't think there's a way to do that. So, you know, I'm sticking, I will say no on the amendment, just because I, you know, I believe the original order, talking about the law, and I'm not sure the wording is in front of you, where at the end of that, at the end of the last sentence, it just say, "If a public hearing begins after 9:00, it must be continued to a future date unless prohibited by law." Right? So, like, it already also encompasses that in case, like, there is time, and that we have to make sure that, you know, things get done by a certain time. So, that's why I'm against the amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, the reason I think the better rule, that's actually stronger for protecting the public, is the amendment, because if we say, "Every public hearing shall begin before 9:00," that is stronger than saying, "If a public hearing begins after 9:00, it must be continued to a future date," because here's what can happen in that scenario. Public hearing opens at 10:00, petitioner comes in, makes his whole, or she, makes her their whole presentation on an issue, you know, "I want XYZ, zone change, special permit, license, you name it." They make their whole presentation and go to 11:30 at night. People leave. Now, we cannot close the public hearing under this rule, we would have to continue it to the next meeting. So, at the next meeting, it comes up, the petitioner is now not required, at this point, to make his second presentation. That presentation has already occurred in the first meeting, from 10:00 at night to 11:30 at night. The only thing that the rule would then provide is that it cannot be closed, but it have to be continued to the next meeting. So, now when the public comes in at the second, they don't have the benefit of the actual presentation that they're now commenting on, defeats the whole point of having the public hearing. That's why this actual, original right doesn't do a great deal for the public. They, I think your best move is to say, "No public hearing," as we stated, "Every public hearing must begin before 9:00, period." And this way, you won't have these late night, albeit rare, and everybody knows what a high opinion I have of Counselor Bacon and the amazing she job she does, but we had a couple instances, because of the packed schedule, where some of these did end up going late, and none of us felt great about it, no, and I think I can speak for the whole ordinance committee on that, I don't think any of us thought that that was too great. So, but, it was the deck of cards we were dealt. Nevertheless, we want to do better, and that this protects the public more, so consider that. Continuing it may not be as helpful as you think.
Mr. President, I'm just going to renew my motion to table this, and see if I can maybe get a second.
Second. All right, so motion is to table, it's seconded, you can no longer debate it. On the motion table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You guys would have it. It was, it's tabled. 14B Charter Rules, order with community support, 2.5 hours to 100 few hours, majority vote requires continuing beyond a certain timeframe, recommend it's been complied with. Counselor Malavales?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this order was put in by Counselor Givner, which would be a fun order if it was actually present today, or like, actually active today, in days like today, but we had a discussion back and forth, I think Counselor Murphy Ramboletti gave a good recommendation as far as Springfield's, their language and their rules around, around their time limits, which Springfield has it, so that there's, it's two hours, and then the vote to extend it is what happens, versus this one, which limits it differently. Basically, we had a discussion back and forth, different members of the, of the council contributed to the discussion, and we just decided that it be complied with, so that if Counselor Givner or any other counselor wants to come back with the other order, or we wanted to update the council rules when the new term begin in 2024, then we can, the conversation can be had at that moment, so that's why it was complied with. Thank you.
So, motion that's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There was no joint committee, so we're on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Mr. President, can we suspend rules take 16, 18, and 35 as a package?
We can take up 16, 18, and 35 as a package, all those in favor?
I, I'm opposed.
Opposed to ordinance?
Opt ordinance.
You're opposed?
Yeah, I'm, I'm opposed.
Okay, we got one opposed.
Oh, you don't want to take 35?
Yeah, well, I, I kinda want to give 35, leave it, withdraw, and then refile it.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't like that.
Oh, off, so we'll stop, I'll, I'll re.
All right, so 16, 18 as a package.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, sir.
16, handicap sign for 38 Beacon Ave. 18, remove at 195 Beach Street.
To ordinance?
All right, to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye. Mr. President, can we suspend the rules, take 17 and late file A as a package, and ship them off to DGR? Please.
One second. One numbers, please.
17 and late file A.
So, take up 17 and late file A as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 17 is to declare 432 Hillside Ave as surplus. Late file A is according to Master in Law, Chapter 30B, declare 37 Brown Ave, so both to DGR.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Painless.
19. Counselor Malavales, or at the city council, take necessary steps towards imposing term limits on elected officials, Charter and Rules.
Charter and Rules.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
20, Counselor Malavales, or that the city departments work towards creating a digital access to all their forms, permits, et cetera.
Finance.
So, this would go to, what'd you say, finance?
Finance.
All those in favor?
The cost involved, right?
Yep. 21, Counselor Malavales, or that the zoning ordinance for Canvas expand beyond the IG District.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, can we take 22, 24, 25, probably 26, and ship them to Public Safety, please?
All right, so take up 22, 24, 25, and 26 as a package.
Is that okay, Counselor?
In favor?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, 22 from Counselor Malavales, or actually 22, 24, 25, and 26 off from Counselor Malavales, create a.
23?
No, copy.
Copy to ordinance.
Which one?
My bad, 23 as well.
23 as well, hold on, let me grab them off. All right, adding 23, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Short-term rentals, that would be Board of Health, so Public Safety. 23, Tapestry State Delegation.
Safe injection.
Safe injection, that would be Public Safety, copy to ordinance. 24, sanitation codes, so that'd be Public Safety. 25 is code violations, that, Public Safety. 26 is mental health, status, substance abuse, that's Public Safety. So, all those to Public Safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let me get those.
So, 20, suspend the rules, take 27, 28.
Safety, too.
To ordinance.
And I'm not sure about 29.
And 29 as well.
Okay, 27.
Is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, 27 goes to Public Safety.
27.
Oh, I did it again.
28 and 29 as a package.
27 goes to Public Safety.
Seven is safety.
All opposed, so 27.
Public Safety.
Oh, actually, all right, just do 27. Or that the committee pathways for community ownership of properties, Public Safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those suspended, take 28, 29 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order that the city create an office of tenant protection, 29, create a housing committee, all those to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
30.
Suspend the rules and take 30 and 33 as a package?
30 and 33 as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 30 is from City Stabilization, 300,000 to Claims and Damages. 33 is Community Planning Grant for 90,000, no match, most be.
Just, if I could real, most should refer to community of finance, but if I could real quickly.
Okay.
Just up to, up to the full body, if you so wish. I did talk to the state's listener about 30, didn't get a lot of details, but explaining that this going into finance committee could be on hold until late January, early, early February, depending on things. The 33 is a grant, which I don't have the details, I didn't get a copy of it, but it's a, it's a community planning grant, which I believe, there's no match, which I believe is the planning department, I don't know if there's any timeframe on that.
Uh, let me see. I ain't getting any communication on that. I don't see any for the grant.
I guess we just have to refer to committee, and if it needs.
For 30, that's what we took up in executive session, just as a reminder to people. I'll stop it. I'll stop it.
I doubt I.
That's where I'll stop. But that was, I think you have to stop, I'm just sorry. I just meant, I'm not in the people, that's what it's for. Okay? All right, so will the body is thirty and thirty-three, finance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty-one.
Motion to uh, pass the first reading.
Is there another, is there anything else? Okay, so thirty-one, motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. It's twenty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for injured on duty, of which there is ten, looks like twelve.
Ooh. Wow, how'd that happen?
If I'm reading it right.
That's what it was two weeks ago. I, I just uh, hope the next city council figures out a way how not to vote on these things every meeting. But it's an accounting move where injured publics, especially public safety officials, police or fire. Um, their salary, injured on duty, there's, they still get their full salary, common sense. But we take it out of the line item of salary and put the money into injured on duty just for accountability and tracking.
All right, so Pat. The, the one caveat would be it's, it's paid tax-free.
Yep.
That's the one little caveat.
It's visibility, so.
We don't bring that up much, but.
All right, so pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Pass the second reading.
Pass the second reading, Clark Paul, always vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner? Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Twelve yeas unanimous vote.
Your vote, your previous one, thirty-five, Counselor.
I just want you to know, it's all over.
It's, yeah, yeah. Good job, Joe.
Good job, y'all.
Really, really excellent job, that's not an easy task.
Counselor Puelo for thirty-five, you want something or?
Yeah, can we give it leave to withdraw, please? It'll be refouled under the.
The motion is to give thirty-five leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-six.
Charter and Rules, please.
New rule regarding proclamations to.
Yes, yeah.
See, so take up thirty-six and late file C as a package, all those in favor? All opposed? C is just a article, thirty-six, it's gonna go to.
Why am I rushing Bennett this hour?
Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty-seven from Counselor Paul, D P W, please continue to monitor uh, the water treat salt areas. Uh, so motion to receive, adopt, send to D P W.
Yeah, please add my name to that as well.
Yeah, Mr. Uh.
Yeah.
Could, could, you had my name also and if you can make an amendment for, I just talked to Carl tonight. Um, Bemis Road across from Kennedy Park, there's some icing that's coming down there. Seems like every year, uh, water is coming out from under. If you could do that, because uh, keep an eye on that to get sanded, because it's ready to frost in the park in front of somebody's house.
We're counting on the new Ward Seven Counselor to take care of that.
I'll, I'll be in touch with her. I, I got her on speed dial already, so.
She's chopping up the bed over there, tackle those, those plaguing issues.
Well, her name was taken in vain last night, so.
She's gotta deal with the snakes on one forty-one.
So adding Bemis, adding Counselor Bartley, Counselor Tomlin, Counselor Bacon.
Can I be added to item thirty-six, please? I mean, thirty, yeah, thirty-six.
Yeah, why not? Okay, going back to thirty-six, adding Counselor Bacon.
Before you got with Tony, so I had to, oh, no.
Yeah.
That was crazy.
That was, that was something.
Thirty-seven, all those in favor? All opposed, all right, thirty-eight.
Ordinance?
Uh, handicap sign for five forty-seven South Bridge Street. Motion is to send a ordinance copy to the commission.
Don't tell me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You gonna say adjourn?
No, we got just two, two more.
Two more.
Get it done. B from Counselor Bacon, the law department sent a communication to Valley Springs and the company.
Yes, uh, I'll add, and add my name to that, please.
Can we suspend rules and receive, adopt and send to the law department, please?
Second.
Motion to take up final action, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to be receive, adopt, send to the law department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Last one, from me. Uh, the council gave Sean Gonzalez the proclamation for his years of service for the Board of Health. Motion to be to suspend rules, take up final action, all those in favor?
Second, aye.
Opposed, make a motion to approve it?
All right, yeah.
Favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I wanna say something.
You wanna say something?
And before we adjourn, Counselor Anderson Burgos wants to say something.
Thank you.
All right.
So I just, you know, I, I didn't get to say anything. And three, three of my favorites are leaving, so I wanna, I wanna be able to say something. I am going to sing a song and a dance. No, honestly, listen, when I first got elected, I was very nervous and I was very scared because, you know, I felt like this is, first of all, it's all new to me. And so the first person I met with was, with Todd. And, you know, he took my hand and he says, trust me, this is what you do, this is what's in front of you, so on and so forth. But then I learned quickly that you couldn't trust someone who hangs out with the Jets. But thank you, Todd, thank you for your leadership. I learned a lot from you, you will be missed. Um, Joe, Joe, I put a lot of cotton in my mouth just so I'd shut up and listen to every single word that came out of your mouth. And I can't say thank you enough. I, I've learned from you, even when the first brick of this city, city hall was laid down. Like, I know the history in and out.
He was here when it was.
Yes, exactly, that's my point. Peter, Peter, you have the patience like Mother Teresa.
You didn't say anything about the Giants.
Hold on.
Listen that much?
Hold on. Peter, you have the patience of Mother Teresa. I learned from you a lot of patience. Finally, Jose Maldonado Velez, you're my brother, you will always be my brother. I respect you and love you and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done. Um, and I should say finally, Counselor Puelo. It's, it's been an experience and very difficult and, and I want you to know that no matter how things played out, I want you to know that I do respect you. And, and, and I, and I really thankful, I'm thankful for what you brought to the table. We might have not agreed, like, most of us do.
But no two counselors have been closer in two years, right?
True, and I, I, I wanna thank you. All right, so anyways, I'm not motion, let's adjourn.
So the motion is to adjourn, it's not.
Mr. President, we are signing off for the last.
Signing off. Signing off.